You're all set, have a good meeting again.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 12th. I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda of all the meeting's order. Who has second? Second by Mr. Quibridge, all in favor? Before we proceed a little bit further, I will, I will read our statement, which is the Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community. We want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate, even canines, to commit to the standards to support and respect our community. So with that, do we have any walk-ins? Walk-ins are for those who are here to address issues that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, I'll turn over to the reporter, the town administrator, quickly.
Do you want to skip this again right to the dog? Because no one's going to be paying attention. Alright, I'll go very quickly. First, I'm pleased to announce that we've promoted Jen Smith to the Position of Conservation Agent. She's been with the Commission for six years. We got between fifteen and twenty resumes. Bob Clark, Frank Snell, I did about five interviews, and Jen was like, she started Monday was her first day, yesterday, and now will work on filling her position. Senior Clerk did that as quickly as possible. Town Clerk wants to remind people that papers are available for the 2024 town election, which will be held May eighteenth in Citrus High School Junasia. One-year term for moderator, three-year term for select board, assessor, town clerk, school committee, planning board, and two board of library trustees. There's filling a vacancy on the planning board, a planning board alternate, and a five-year term on the housing authority. If you would like to take out nomination papers, please call Clerk's Office, seven one five four five eight seven four three. Deadline is submit at least a hundred signatures of registered voters. It's Friday, March twenty ninth at five P M, Clerk's Office. No offense to our new dog here tonight, but dog walking at the golf course is not supposed to be a season. We are now into getting ready for golf season. The golf course is scheduled on March twenty ninth. So between now and then, the team will be working the golf course check. We want to thank everyone who's out there this winter and took some good care of the course. We look forward to seeing you on the twenty eighth night. The Board of Health is hosting a mosquito and tick presentation on Monday, April twenty ninth. Also live from the dog. Three thirty to five, Citrus Library in the community room. Presentation will be in collaboration with the Plymouth County Mosquito Patrol Project. They will provide helpful tips on keeping you and your family safe from exposure to mosquitoes and ticks. Recreation Department's spring and summer registration opens next Tuesday, three nineteen at five thirty. Registration for the Sailing and Maritime Adventures Program opens on Wednesday at five thirty. Twenty-ninth Annual Egg Hunt will take place on March thirtieth at nine thirty at Widow's Wharf. If you have questions on any of these, please contact Recreation Department, seven one five four five eight seven three eight. Last thing I think that I'll mention is we still have fourteen non-resident all-be stickers available, a hundred and fifty one slaver day, or one other day comes, you will be required of a be sticker. So make sure you get the be stickers at the town treasurer's office. Thanks for that.
Okay. Any questions there, Dan? So, before we move on, I know everybody wants to move on, I'm going to quickly add one personal announcement. As you heard, Jim announced that nomination papers are due by March twenty ninth. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to let folks know that I will not be seeking reelection. I've had the luxury and the privilege of being on this board for ten years. I've been honored to serve Citrus, and I've been honored to sit aside my colleagues, thanks to me and my colleague before as well. But I think it's time for a new generation to step in and contribute to moving forward all the initiatives and things that we need to do in Citrus. So if you're interested, please pull papers. They're due by March twenty ninth, as Jim said. And I'm sure I'll have more to say at the end, but just want to let folks know that, and thank you everyone for the opportunity to serve. And with that, we're going to move to our first agenda item, which is so exciting, is to discuss and vote a donation, the Citrus Police Department. Taylor, would you like to come forward? We're going to introduce this newest donation. Hopefully the cameras can catch him. So this is the donation of a black Labrador Retriever puppy. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Actually, I know you're there, I apologize. You're upstairs.
That's okay. Good evening, how are you?
Great, welcome.
My apologies that I'm not there in person tonight, but I think honestly, we know who the star of the show is anyway, so I don't think that my, my absence will be missed. But I really just want to take an opportunity to introduce our new community resource dog, and hopefully you'll be in favor of this vote tonight. Over the course of the past several years, as you remember, as we're looking at doing our budget and things, we've talked a lot about mental health and critical incident stress and the One Mind Campaign. So it's been a push that we've had, and Lieutenant O'Shea, who's here with you tonight, has really been kind of behind a lot of that mental health. And it was some time ago that we started talking about this initiative, doing a community resource dog, a comfort dog. And Lieutenant O'Shea wrote the initial grant, which brought some money in, and now over the course of the past many months, we've really been on this trajectory to get to where we are today. So recently, the Plymouth County District Attorney's Office has started a countywide comfort dog program. They received a lot of money from the Department of Justice, and are really looking to put together twenty different teams throughout Plymouth County that can help support this initiative. So in the write-up that I think you had, it kind of gets into a bit more detail, so I won't go too far into that. But the team that you see before you, Lieutenant O'Shea, like I said, just kind of brought the mental health component to this, and really helped to ignite the initiative. And Sergeant McLaughlin, as I'm sure you all know, has been doing canine for now more than seventeen years, and the expertise that he brings to the town of Citrus in helping us get this program going and the connections. And Officer Billings will be the handler for this, for this new puppy. And Officer Billings has been our Community Impact Officer for the past several years. I'm sure that you see him at pretty much every event that happens in town, and is really plugged into what's going on with the community. And this is now an excellent resource for us to be able to make connections at community events, and really deal a lot with kind of bridging gaps when we're looking at having communication and things. So really excited to finally have this program going and looking forward to where it's going to go for us.
Thank you, Chief. We're very excited. We'll let Lieutenant O'Shea, if you want to just add a little bit. Your idea?
I think that Chief touched on the main point that the, this has been maybe three years in the making, and so a lot of hard work went into trying to get the program up and running, and we saw a need. And I can't imagine the great things that are going to come from this program. Also, we just feel lucky to be able to have this opportunity. The D E S office was a huge proponent of it, and so we're just, we're feeling lucky, and we're feeling like, can't wait to see what after really does. I'm really, is this your first dog?
First police dog, yeah, yeah, first police dog. So I'm kind of under the guidance of everybody at the department, and specifically Brian, who's seen so much, you know, tenure experience with his dog.
He looks nervous.
Yeah. I think we're all a little nervous, but yeah, it's going to be a little bit of a learning curve, and we're going to get into some training in the next couple of months. That'll be, you know, kind of a never-ending endeavor of training, but he's going to start getting some training towards the end of, actually, this month. And then, once he gets five or six months, he'll start to do his, his comfort dog training, and that community resource training, and that segmented into, you know, one or two weekends. So he'll, he'll do that next. But in the meantime, until then, we're just going to kind of be a puppy, and we're going to, we're going to try and figure it all out.
He already looks like he has a possible disposition.
He does, yeah.
Many of us have puppies, have had puppies up here, so we're, we're used to it. That's, that's a good sign.
It's a good sign. So eleven, eleven, eleven weeks on, last time, it's probably twelve, twelve weeks.
And did you want to, do you want to speak a little bit about the naming opportunity?
I think that Chief.
Chief, did you want to speak about the naming opportunity?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm mesmerized because I'm concerned that the puppy seems a little bit stressed right now, so I'm just worried about that. But yeah, two, two additional things. One that I failed to mention, this is a great opportunity, obviously, but we've been fortunate that, as I said, we received some additional grant funding. And now there's, there's additional tiers that are coming. So so far, we're probably in the thirty-five thousand dollar range of grant funding that we've received. The District Attorney's Office is really committed to this program too. So as it says in the write-up, in addition, in addition to the grant funding, and they're going to go after additional rounds of grant funding, they're working with Bridgewater State College to do a study on the impact of these community resource dogs. And in terms of the naming, you know, the, the dog right now is, is nameless, but we're hoping within the next twenty-four hours or so, we'll have a name for him. I spoke with Superintendent Burkhead, and we're really looking at it kind of being able to partner with the school and put it out to the kids and get some suggestions from them. We have a little questionnaire that's ready to go, that I'll send over to Superintendent Burkhead to pass out to each of the schools, K through twelve, because really, one of the things with this program is being able to have involvement with the schools, work with our SROs, and work in each of the different schools, K through twelve, to involve the dog. And Superintendent Burkhead was, I think, really excited about this. He had worked with a program like this in his past district. So hopefully by Thursday afternoon, we'll have a name, and we'll be off to the races.
Well, I hope we'll be at the copy room last, last round, like, what you decide. He's adorable.
Yes, he is.
So adorable. And I just wanted to ask for a thank also to the Chico Kennel family. They seem to, do they donate the dog? Because it seems like it's a program, and they're very committed to the state.
Yes, and they'd like to donate the dog to us, and we're very excited, and hopefully we'll be a police dog. And so it was great, we had a very, very kind family, very hopeful. We did a run, and we'll see you up here, too.
Excellent. Any additional comments from the board members?
Just to look, look yours out. You see the training a little different from the rest. It's got to be.
Yeah, it's a little different, yes. Yeah, we have a different curriculum. We love to bring on Doug and Mike, Rick, and now, not enough room at the table here, but, but no, it's definitely a little different. They have multiple trainings, and every initial imprint will be done at the, their training facility now.
I think, no, right, I think you're going to have to take him around.
He's going to be doing some, some personal.
Yeah, you have to go on a little tour.
He's going to go say hi to everybody.
He has to come say hi to you, too.
Well, I, I just, I'd just like to say we had a Chico, and the sweetest dog ever, ever. So they're very good creatures.
Good to hear. Yeah, we had a lot of positive feedback, but another bit of things to say.
Just relative.
Very just relative.
Just relative, okay. Karen, anything?
I just.
Is there anything additional that you'd like to share?
I just wanted to give him Taylor's role on the, are we new to the dog life, folks?
He has been introduced, and he will be out there. He'll be coming out, he'll be coming out sometime on patrol, and then to, so he'll be making that, he'll be making, making the rounds.
Taylor won't charity that. He hasn't been the greatest speaker, but when he goes on the boat, is actually when he takes the longest nap. So. The puppy or Taylor? All right, well, we're going to make a really fast motion if you have anything else, because we very well say hi to him. That's okay. All right. So anyone want to make the motion?
Move that the Select Board accept the donation of black Labrador Retriever puppy, valued at three thousand dollars to Citrus Police Department for future community racing initiatives. With our thanks.
Second? Motion by Karen Conley, second by Karen Campfield, all in favor? Aye. Taylor.
All right, we'll do some pets, I know you guys.
Forget about the public while we just say hello. I'd like to move for the term.
I'm sure. Never see each other.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Okay, you too.
Thank you.
Right. So, thank you, everyone, for letting us. We're going to move on. So, yep, that part's over. So it's exciting new program. All right, so next on our agenda is to discuss and vote an outdoor entertainment permit for the Empower Her. And then, do you want to come on up? Artie Kelly?
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, Kelly, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Gillian.
Andrea.
Andrea. This is our fabulous organization, and fabulous annual event, so if you'd like to take a moment, just, you know, do an overview as to what your mission is, and, and what the event is, give you a little bit of context.
Perfect, yep. So Empower was formerly known as Empower Her, it's been passed here. Founded right here in Citrus by resident Cara Belvin back in twenty thirteen. And she essentially founded the organization to support youth with loss of parents. So it started off with girls with lost mothers, ages anywhere from four to twenty-four. And she actually has a legacy program that extends beyond that, providing mentorship and programs throughout the year, just to let girls know initially that they weren't alone in their grief, and that there were others out there, and, and good role models, too, and mentors to, you know, who survived, essentially. And then over the past year, she expanded to include all children of any parent loss. So it's a big expansion that got her dating. And I should say that all the programs that are provided are in the process of families. So fundraising is obviously very important. So we do an annual luminary, and the biggest, and like, the best throughout the country is here in Citrus. It's been help at the lighthouse for the past three years, and we will have to do again this year. We have around eight hundred or so luminaries essentially that are purchased. They're twenty-five dollars per luminary, purchase one in honor of someone who is still with us, or in memory of someone who has passed away. And we have another Citrus resident who does hand calligraphy on each bag, so they're handwritten, and they're just a beautiful memorial out there on the lighthouse jetty. So this year, we hope we hold it on Friday, May tenth, with the rain date of the eleventh. And we, we set up around four, and we have some acoustic musicians who come around five and play, you know, circus. I wouldn't say the mood is somber by any means, but it is a nice reflective kind of mood. It's not rock music by any means, it's acoustic musicians. And then he, instead of that, we're at seven, so we can enjoy the display at that time. We figure about three hundred people moves through, I have fluidly throughout four to seven, eight, optish. And as in past years, we'll have food trucks this year also, just to kind of, again, lines for an atmosphere of common reflect and remember.
Great. And the luminary goes out along the breakwater, correct?
Yes, correct. We stop at, through sort of the cold breakwater, and stop for the crabs.
That's wrong, we not. And you double check ties for that day, right?
Yes.
I don't, I usually tie completely, so it would be pretty good to have that one's good line. And I just wanted to add, too, that this has been expanding to many more cities across the country. It's not just here in Citrus. So congratulations to you and Cara, the rest of the organization, really expanding this mission into one of the mission. I just have one question for Jim. Any type of stuff with, you know, scaffolding or anything that we have down there at the lighthouse right now for May tenth?
We might be finished by then.
Finished by then, okay.
Yeah. The scaffolding is spensed off, it's just right around the base of the lighthouse.
Okay. No pressure. Thanks for saving enough pressure, don't worry. You have all your paperwork in order, so everything's good there. Any questions or comments?
Well, you say three hundred people. Do most of them park in the harbor than the lockdown, or?
I can see most people, again, because it's kind of fluid part there. Or you've seen some overflow at, I think, the general store, that you just can't play us through there.
And you haven't had that many and fast that many people?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not an issue, people, too many cars, I don't know.
Never have, okay.
Thank you. Cara, anything?
That's just a wonderful, wonderful, traditional event.
Do you have a motion? Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to empower for Mother's Day luminary event at the lighthouse on Friday, May tenth, one eighty-four, from five P M to nine P M, with entertainment being provided by acoustic musicians. Motion by Susan Harrison, and second by Karen Campfield, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming in, and good luck, and enjoy some head.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Is John Delato, did I pronounce that correctly?
Pretty good.
All right, John. So, John, I understand you're an applicant for the Board of Health.
Right.
So I'll just give you one moment, I'll have you state your name and your address for the raid, just so she can capture everybody. But we currently have a position open on the Board of Health. We have a gentleman, Doug White, who has graciously agreed to stay on until we find a replacement. And you graciously come forward, John, to donate your time. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm a retired, therefore currently an unlicensed surgeon. I was a senior attending surgeon at St. Francis Hospital, Hartford. I was a clinical associate professional of surgery at UConn. A diplomat of the National Board of Surgery, a member of American College of Surgeons. I'm an AFOS veteran. I was majoring AFOS from sixty-eight to seventy in the field of surgery at Whitman. AFOS based in Missouri, in Richard Scovar, AFOS based in Missouri. I am, I was the founder and CEO of a ten-man surgical organization, and developer of the St. Francis Hospital Breast Clinic, and also, I'll say, instigator of developing the hospice program.
Of their what? Their hospice program?
I also worked, worked young for a while at the hospital's request to redo all the infrastructure, finances, and et cetera, et cetera, at St. Francis Hospital.
So Dr. Delato, is there anything in particular that you've, you know, witnessed or seen on the Board of Health that you feel that your contributions will really assist them?
Quite honestly, I'm not familiar with their functions. I have, for a while, wanted to be a member of the Board of Health, and hoped that I could contribute something to society. My wife, sixty-four years, died last year after five years of progressive physical and mental disability, and I was sole kid. So I was unable to do anything, but now I have the opportunity, and I'd like to contribute.
Sorry to give you a loss, but we appreciate you coming forward and being active, and that'll, that'll help.
Contributing is the.
Does anybody have any questions? No, just a comment. Thank you so much for raising your hand, and as somebody of your experience with, I'm sure, benefit the community quite a bit.
But then, I'm hoping I can, I can, I'm sure.
Other question I have is, have, I mean, you've had all of these administrative roles, have you had any gambling in the municipal world?
No. Don't be a different thing. Learning something new is always good, too.
No, just thank you for coming forward. The Board of Health is three people?
Correct.
So for this board to think about three people is tough, because it's.
I think they're fine with three people.
Is there a quorum issue?
There's no quorum issue currently. Doug White is staying on until we find a replacement.
Yeah.
So as long as you have Dr. Delato, it's kind of. Actually, I think you heard, recruited him.
I figured somebody must have. I mean, you just appointed a new member, too.
Yes. Well, we appointed Doug White again, he's a resident, and then there's a woman who joined recently. I don't, I think you have a sheet in your back.
Yeah, we do with the three members, yeah. It'd be nice, because Karen Conley is also nursing background, too, so it's, there's some nice level background.
And, and we explained to Dr. Delato that there was a learning curve with the sewer, the septic case, and some other things that they handled. But he was also a challenge.
Anything else? Three straight folks come up, right at comfort to everyone. It's just, the background, it's just lovely to see, it's just, it's almost there.
Excellent. All right, we'll just make a motion to appoint you. Yes, please.
Move to appoint John Delato, did I say that right, Anthony, to the Board of Health for a term of three years, article successor.
Motion by Karen Campfield, second by Gandy Quibridge, all in favor? Aye. Welcome, and thank you.
Thank you all.
And with our thanks to Doug White.
Yes, yep. We're sticking it out, and thank you for participating until a successor is found, so, yeah. That was very, very good. Okay, so we are right on time. So next, we have a public hearing and a discussion and vote. CP Woodfire Pizza LLC is moving into a new location and also applying for alcohol beverage license, a communicable license, an indoor payment license, and an outdoor entertainment license. So I'm going to welcome you up. If you could just give me your name and address for the record, and then talk to us about this great opportunity that you have.
Thanks so much, yeah, for having me. Christopher Patrick's with us, you probably know. Moving to three eighteen Driftway from seventeen U. Driftways. We're a little bit more of the more upscale Italian style, so a full dining room, you know, wine, beer on a single fleet. But there's more pasta dishes. I brought it with Kevin Long, we're tossing fresh pastas, and I don't think scratch made as we're doing. A new oven that's going to be available, hopefully keep up with my business. June, by the way, it takes one hour, so if you want a pizza, you know, you're good as well. So hopefully get that down in twenty minutes and speed things up a little bit for everyone here. Yeah, I'm excited. It's going to be a lot of fun. Team being a part of the community, and doing fundraising tomorrow, actually, you guys are around for STEM, raising money for, uh, June, February, the teachers running the marathon, so it's going to be a lot of fun. And John White is a great guy. I hired his grandson, great guy. All families from home, they're all doctors. Great, great guy at the Board of Health.
Oh, sexy, good.
Yes.
So, Chris?
Chris, yes, sure.
So running a restaurant with an alcohol beverage is much different than just running the small pizzeria that you do currently? So talk to me a little bit about the training of your staff, what type of software you'll have in there, and requirements you'll be studying.
I'm making sure that everyone's tip certified. I'm sure I already have, I think half my staff's already done, I have a few waiting already. I guess you guys might be on there every single day, anyway. But I just want to make everybody incorporate already learning. I'm going to get one of those, I think it's called, the machine, put the license in. I'm just doing it anyway, I do everybody. But for me, too, it's like, nicely, I know I've worked on many restaurants, alcohol. We're not geared towards that bar scene. I find it to be far less, not so less complicated, but less instance. It's like, you know, the country kind of bar lends itself to that decor. I'm trying to go way more of an upscale, sit down, you know, a single glass of wine with a pizza, about like a, you know, drunken bar fight kind of place, you know? We'll keep that tendency in all ends of the place, you know? Uh, yeah, way more with like a hybrid kind of, find back in kind of area.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, definitely, I like having everybody, I do that now anyway, with, uh, Board of Health, with, uh, you know, service safety analogy, just good to educate everyone, even if you're not cooking or if you're not serving or whatever, you should know these things, you know? So, uh, like I reimburse my whole staff, I'm like, listen, just get tip certified, I'll pay for it, just get to know, you know? It's good to have everyone on board and on the same page, so.
Yeah, and we actually have some free, you know, stripper funds to make sure that they all are, so, especially, this is a new alcohol license that we're giving out, so we just are making sure that that's there.
Absolutely, safety is very, very important in alcohol comparison, yes. Let's be honest, we've all seen it, we've all experienced it, drugs are a huge issue, uh, the whole state, the whole country.
Um, before I go to the rest of the board, um, just one other question, can you explain a little bit more about the outdoor entertainment area? So, is the building that you're going in, the new one with all the glass, like right behind the dog, kind of, right there?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay, alright, that, I, I thought it was an office for them, so.
It was, it was an office, and then we're coming into a coffee shop, and then, uh, eventually negotiating with something.
Oh, great, good job, that'll be great location.
Yes, plus we have more coffee places.
And what will the, what will the outdoor component look like?
So, yeah, I'm just keeping it simple, um, so it's just that little front little area, I'm just gonna, we have some trees kind of going around, I think it's pretty in the area, I just have two little door tables with a press, uh, and four seats. Uh, and I put, you know, outdoor music just for, kind of more for fun, but I don't know, probably do that for the most part, try to kind of keep it contained. Uh, maybe have acoustic guitar, a serenade, use some Italian music or something, you know, the acoustic, you know, nighttime kind of thing, but I'm gonna keep that pretty low key, I'm not gonna do like a big outdoor. Uh, just a couple of tables, very nice, beautiful, it's right in the ocean, you kind of have to have that little sun in your face, you know?
Yeah, the only concern, I think this will be up for discussion with the rest of the board tonight, is up to a five piece band right next to all those residences. I just think we need to consider that, but maybe just leave a boost to start.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not geared any further to the street.
That's just indoor.
Yeah, the, the five piece was indoors, three piece is outside, and I'm way far away from the people.
Oh, indoors is up to five.
Yeah, because you have that whole parking lot from B all the way to the first.
And outdoor is up to three piece group of acoustic singers, guitars with amplification.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, stay corrected. Alright, um, I'll defer to the board, Andrew, did you have any questions for Chris?
No, I mean, I'm using my ears, the, we're leaving tip certified, uh, that's my concern, um, no, and ask for the music and the noise and everything, you, kind of, unknown and, uh, I don't know. Training.
Training, that's.
Uh, it's already gonna be a lot of action, so I'm less worried. It seems like we're out of line with other ones, uh, with other, with other folks, uh. So, yeah, I don't know, I'm with you, I don't know, it's a week and a half, it seems like.
Well, it's good, it looks Thursday to Sunday, Saturday outside, just till ten P M, which is great, eleven P M it goes.
I think we got probably overstating it, because I'm working media, I'm probably home. What should I do, I'd probably go home by Tuesday night, my kid is my favorite.
Yeah, I just have one question, because I saw the notice to a butters, are the butters, are they all baking? Are, are any of them baking?
There are some folks, there are.
I can, I can tell you that when I did my butters list, I, there was only one person that was actually a person. It was almost all businesses and ETAs, like, there's really nothing really around that area, but there was one person on Stockbridge Boulevard.
Okay.
I think everything else is businesses, the most part, yeah.
They're just starting to get off, we can see, so.
Yeah, we, yeah, new apartment place will be, yeah, but even the apartment place, we look at, like, I'm kind of still tucked away, so I'm not really, it's not like I'm right next to them, you know? So it's still a good, good place to go, so it's not gonna be too bad, you know, I'm not gonna touch a hard rock, ready metal there, so, it's a good point.
Excited. Here. Who's your landlord?
Uh, the Drew family?
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's still landlords over the, on whatever they obviously are.
Yes, I was gonna say.
So, I assume that if anything goes wrong in terms of natures, that the Drew company here better just move on.
Yeah, Mikey Hoffman's running the place, we're known forever, and, you know, we work together, so, so, you know? I think, I've been kind of, be a part of this community forever, I'm not trying to upset anybody.
Hey, you win all the pizza awards, we're very excited, more pizzas for all.
I wanna work with you, but I don't try to work against anybody here, so I mean, I'm not gonna.
Well, and I, I have to compliment you on your chair, I know you work in a lot of groups, I see the name all over the place, all the time, so, um, and that's a great location, it's very visible, people have been asking for months, who's going in there, who's going in there? I heard it's gonna be a taco place, but. I just want to, sadly, it's gonna be you.
One, really one is like a clam shack, like one of those like old like heat card fireplaces?
Yeah.
Yeah, I miss that.
So, are you maintaining the card?
Yes, yes, yeah, I went up to it, I was in push, I know what they're doing with it, but, what, condos and businesses planned, or something to do with those condos?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, thank you.
That's, that's what my pay raises, I don't know.
I know it's in the back of it, I mean, who's going to be the manager, are you?
Just me.
Your manager, or your manager?
Manager of the blubber, the box holder?
Um, and, uh, they've been partying through that?
Uh, so they came with twelve spaces, but at least another nineteen can be an ETA to increase it. Yeah, which is, once I get all, it's too vast. Yeah, they're gonna, the ETA to put signs up, and they have, uh, you know, C Gs, this row, this row, and it all, you know, stereo roles. And, uh, there'll be one, one right next to where the dumpster is, they'll say like for takeout only, or a doordash, or anything like that, for those people. You kind of keep that away from everyone, so it won't be big, so, that's, and I'll, yeah, and they have their own separate entrance on it too, so they're not keep the flow going, you know, I don't think, maybe this is easy, you know, these flows in the restaurant.
Um, and just to reiterate that, I mean, the soup is, it's, the, the seriousness of which we take violations to, uh, license, uh, oh, really?
Absolutely.
I know, and the last question I have is, um, blood shirt on, any time, like.
That is a billion dollar question, um, so like, I don't really know, so, it, Brerwood was a subcontractor, so it's just kind of at their mercy. Like Blue Bears are in the pummel right now, that, you know, May, June maybe, I would like, you know, it can't be past June, so I'll say June first, but as I, down in my head, but I'd like to do it first, I'll put that. And I like to do a couple of weeks of, not even really telling anyone, but just kind of, get the king, so, yeah, soft opening, and then kind of hit the ground running, you know? But I think they'll, I don't know if we'll be able to pull it off, anyways, it's curiosity, everybody goes by, the buzz around town, so, we'll, we'll look at it, it's much fun. Uh, well, right now, so I already kind of been hiring everyone, so I, we have fourteen employees from my seven or eight and a half a quarter, so we're already getting everyone staffed up, training, I'm having all the tip certification now, we're doing training seminars, trying to get everything kind of going now, so it's ready, we're getting there, you know?
Thank you for, thank you for your business, bro.
I appreciate you guys, and how you guys do for us in town, and all you guys are great customers too, so thank you guys.
Alright, anything else before we move to the motions?
I, I just, I told Chris I was gonna oppose this, because I spend enough time buying his pizzas now, without me now to get a pizza and a glass of wine, I'm probably gonna gain fifty pounds or something.
I didn't place it in the wee time yet, you know, I couldn't wait an hour, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
I'm pretty much in the wine waiting, yeah, it still takes a while, honey, you just gotta go wait.
We require you to stay at Tuesday.
If I just drop off, I'm a whole.
Yeah, just, yeah. Well, just say, Thursday, oh wait, Sunday through Wednesday till nine P M, yeah, okay, oh.
I'll, I'll say.
Alright. That's, alright, so we have three motions, first to approve the annual on premise, uh, license, so, so maybe we want to make, that, we can make all three if we'd like, I don't think there are any changes that we need to make with any of them. Are you okay with that, Marina, can we read all three, and then, okay, so I don't think anybody has any opposition to any of them, that I can tell. Do you want to read?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, any comment from the public? Thank you. I don't see any. Yes, thank you, Karen.
Move to approve a new annual on premise, uh, over a scrap hall, for holly beverages licensed for CPs. Woodfire Pizza LLC located at three eighteen Driftways, since we're maps, total square footage of the one forest average unit is two thousand two hundred ninety-eight square feet, one thousand nine hundred fourteen square feet inside and three hundred eighty-four square feet outside, seating for eighty, for two hundred six, three X hours of operation. Uh, for liquor sales are Sunday through Wednesday, twelve P M through nine P M, and Thursday through Saturday, twelve P M to eleven P M pending, uh, E D C C approval. Further, move to approve a new communicular license for CPs with fire pizza LLC. Four hours operating Sunday through Wednesday, twelve P M to nine P M, and Thursday through Saturday, twelve P M to eleven P M pending Board of Health approval. Further, move to approve a new entertainment license for CPs with fire pizza LLC. Indoors up to a five piece live band, amplified singers and guitarists, amplified acoustic singers and guitarists, or a DJ. Sunday through Wednesday, twelve P M to nine P M, and Thursday through Saturday, twelve P M to eleven P M. Outdoors up to a three piece group of acoustic singers, guitarists with amplification, Sunday through Wednesday, twelve P M to nine P M, and Thursday through Saturday, twelve P M to ten P M.
Thank you, motion by Andrew Goodrich, second, second by Susan Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We look forward to opening day.
Really appreciate it, more certified, what I said?
I'm all confident in you, it's gonna be a success.
Thanks so much.
Alright, thank you, Chris.
Appreciate it, what they get.
I'm waiting.
See you all soon, sure.
Yeah, Friday.
Thank you for everything.
Okay, uh, next on our agenda is to discuss and vote, uh, a new Hocker Pedler's license application, um, you Tassan Melot?
Yes, sir.
How are you this evening? Now you're coming in for an application for Marco's Ice Cream?
Yes, sir.
Uh, open up about your business?
Uh, it's an ice cream truck, nice little truck, that I set it up myself, and, uh, we started rewrapped ice cream. And, uh, I would like to go up to the community, I serve here, I like it very much, I like the sound, I like the area very much. And I'd like to have a chance and, you know, work here, I'll do it.
So when you're looking to have an ice cream truck, uh, travel through, you have one truck, right? That will travel to the different beach locations during the summer, like the competition does today, which is great. Um, and they say allowable neighborhoods from Sunday to Saturday, do we have any neighborhoods that are designated?
We have neighborhoods there where ice cream trucks are not allowed.
Okay.
And Mr. Alip has received the list of those, yeah, he received the Hocker Pedder, uh, policy from this law board, he knows where you cannot go.
Okay. Will be nice to have some competition, so, which would be great, um, any additional questions, I'll try to board Karen.
Um, hi, welcome, I did first pizza, now ice cream, and started with a puppy, this is like a banner.
All good things.
More meetings like this.
Um, I guess my first, I have two questions, one is, have you operated an ice cream truck before, and so where, what community?
I have, yes, I have operated in Boston, you know, oh, Boston, I had, uh, promise in, uh, Wopo, in the past about three years ago, I started in Wopo mess, but mostly it was in Boston. Not down here, yeah, back in the area, by the area.
And how did you situate as your next location?
It's nice, I, I, usually when I have a day off, you know, I like to bring the family, I just drive to the area. I just like to, you know, deliver what's like it's out, and I like to be able to see if I can do better than Boston.
And. I believe there are two other ice cream trucks that have, um, better license.
We have three, and this would be the fourth, and final, according to current policy.
Okay.
For the town, so.
I can only remember two, okay, and you're worth that, excellent, okay. Um, great. Karen?
Yeah, one ice cream trucks.
I only have a comment from my nine year old to urge me to support this motion. So, I must, uh.
We'll give you a history.
Yeah. Yes. Order's ready.
Yeah, we'll support, more ice cream.
One of my favorite memories, the ice cream truck.
Oh, I know.
The bell, ringing.
Forever on the corner off of the, up the street. So we do still have some information that we do need to gather for you, so what we'll do is go through, uh, and make a motion, uh, to approve the license vote. We're still pending valid vehicle registration, proof of liability of insurance, and Board of Health.
I have explanatory, you know, in the winter, you know, there's no need to keep the insurance standing.
Wow, right.
So put it on the side, and end of this month, it will be registered and insured again, and on the road.
Okay.
And we, we've worked very together, we'll continue.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to call that out.
If you're ready, when I have it, I will bring it to you.
Okay.
Get it together.
Alright, sounds terrific, uh, if there are any other further questions or discussion, do I have a motion?
Andrew should make it.
Sorry, yeah, your son will.
Oh, I know, I moved, um, moved in select board to approve a new Hocker Pedder license for now, I forget, how do I say your name, bro?
What's that?
What's that, oh, what? Do you have this, that's Marco's Ice Cream Truck at Situate Public Beaches, allowable neighborhoods, neighborhoods from eleven A M through eight P M, from April first through September third, pending, uh, valid vehicle registration, proof of liability insurance, for, uh, approval.
Motion by Andrew Goodrich, second by Susan Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to Situate, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Hope to see you this summer.
I'll be out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, have a great evening.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Alright, seven to eight hours. Great, good job on the, uh, timing of the agendas.
Hey, you know, it's like, it's a little tricky, I was really worried about that beautiful puppy. Honestly, I could have a puppy here all the way.
Yeah, we all could, um, so next on our agenda is to discuss and vote, um, Heritage Apparel, and they request you use a logo from Situate. Uh, so, are you Dan?
Yes.
Hi, Dan, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
Nice sweatshirt.
Thank you, thank you for that, too, yes.
Uh, so, um, Mike, can you talk to us a little bit about what you're requesting, tell us a little bit about your business?
Sure, uh, about a year and a half ago, um, I saw them two other Situate dads, kind of noticed that there was a lack of quality custom designs. Uh, apparel for the town, we see a lot of just kind of Situate, um, so we wanted to do something that's a little bit more higher quality, nicer design, more custom, um, specific to the town instead of just letters on your shirt, so, kind of got together, started it, and we sell through our website and through local stores, so we're now in Sand Hills General Store, Situate Pharmacy, and Village Market. Um, and it's done well, it's kind of one of those things that we've been starting on the side, we've grown into three other towns, Mark, Markville, Bassett, Norwell. And we just have a couple of things for Kingham and Annoverwood Situas, that are best and our favorite to live here. So, um, and being in Village Market, they let us expand, um, we got a part of it in there, but that first, I don't remember why I went in the door. It's huge space, and they kind of let us slowly take over the whole space, so part of that is coming up with new creative designs, and apparel, a lot of what we do is, we do T-shirts, hats, beanies, sweatshirts, more comfortable clothing, um, and for adults, unisex, and, uh, youth. So we've, we've worked with the schools, um, P T Os, and, uh, a big part of this is, all of our designs are custom, except this is the first time, this would be something that is an existing design, because if you go to places like Nantucket, for instance, you see those shirts, you go like souvenir cup, it says like Nantucket Beach Sticker, or Marthas many of you got, that beach sticker here is something everyone around town knows it and likes it, we thought it would, we'll put that on a long seat T-shirt, or even a tank top, or a T-shirt, and so that's where I reached out to you guys, and we didn't want to break any rules and steal your design, so.
Somebody owns a light to that other beach sticker artwork, right?
Uh, for all the towns, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's, I'm not sure how it works, but the other towns are the person who've done the licensing or anything of that nature, but, uh, I'm, they're supposed to get permission from the town? I know that legally, or some, some people probably don't, I think, some of them are doing in their, screw dripping in their garages, but, uh, we wanted to make sure we're doing it the right way with our town, so, we plan to do a lot more stuff, but this was first time, like I said, it was something that was an existing design that you can get probably owned it, trademark stuff. Um, yeah, that's it, and we're hoping to expand more and grow, and maybe someday it'll be my full time job, but.
So is this your first venture, uh, with a trademark, or a, a licensing situation?
Yep.
Everything else, we're all, you know.
It's all custom, yeah, I went to school for graphic design, in fact, I think I'm a Jim husband, so I think I worked with Jim briefly at Newmark, uh, I did marketing for them a long time, I didn't work for them two months, but, um, yeah, so my background's in art and design, so I do all the stuff you see on the website, um.
And what kind of arrangement do you have with the retailers, do you have to pay for space?
No, it's just wholesale, so, um, Village has been great, because they give us, it's almost like a full retail, the size of this matter, especially for a grocery store. Uh, but other places like Sand Hills, you, you may provide the shelving, kind of a little, if you've been in there, it's there, we have a little four by shelves and a wrap. So we provide that, and kind of, and the owners have been great, we, it's always small businesses that we work with, and they kind of look to us to say, what do you think's gonna work here? And especially places like Sand Hills, it's very seasonal, so it does really well. And especially places like Sand Hills, it's very seasonal, so it does really well, means that those, the turnover of all the vendors coming through there. Um, so Village is interesting because it's a lot larger, and we had a competitor in there, and it kind of, the managers and the owners were great. They're very easygoing, like, yeah, whatever you think's gonna work. So we started with a small area, did really well, and their other vendor hasn't really been refilling them regularly, so there's a lot, lot holes in years prior. So it's like, yeah, sure, you guys should just slow this stuff back a little. So it's, it's been great, and we just, you know, we have wholesale pricing negotiated with all the vendors, and they sell at retail, which is the same. They can sell more than, we, we never sell more than.
Do you recommend what they?
Yeah, we have recommended pricing, but there are certain ones, like we were actually wearing Yup Sub Two, which is over on Hummer Rock, it's a little surf shop there, on, technically in Marshfield. And she'll sell for more than what we sell on our website and what we recommend, because she has a lot of tourists that just don't care.
Right.
They'll pay a little bit more, but we have, we have an agreement with all the stores. We'll never price our stuff online cheaper than what the others. Uh, it's great, working with the local shops is kind of where our market is in smaller stores.
And just, for our test, a little to other questions, what was the desire for the, the dory and the Situate beach sticker artwork?
Um, just based on we saw it successful with other places like that Nantucket shirt, you see the long sleeves, and we think it would work well with Situate. I think people really like that sticker. It's kind of a recognizable brand in the town, and I think if we put it in Sand Hills General and Village, people will buy it, whether it's on a T-shirt or a long sleeve T-shirt. Whatever it is, I think it's a, it's kind of, and our whole thing is like, actually, we have T-shirts for each beach, so we have like Sand Hill T-shirts via, uh, we have now Egypt, we have all the beaches, so we try and design stuff that's very like specific that people will hit home, instead of just saying Situate, people will see that. We think a lot of people that live here now and have left, go all over the world, they'll kind of see the beach sticker and think of the town, and think, you know, remind them of home a little bit. Um, so that was a big reason why we chose that.
Thank you, it's a great idea. Uh, I did read through the agreement and one of, unfortunately, I'm in business.
Yeah.
For you. Um, and I work with a lot of licensees, and typically there's a percentage, right?
Yeah.
Of those that own that trademark that we usually request. So that was my only thing that popped out to me. I mean, there's an initiative also at the city of Boston, I, you know, it was in the news recently, in the last thirty to sixty days, that they're actually, you know, looking at this segment and at this industry as well. Those folks are making money, a lot of money, great living, which is nice, it's a great business. You know, on behalf of the municipalities and the cities and towns, so starting to look at how do you generate, you know, some additional revenues, you know, for the town as well, if you heard earlier. But certainly are looking for ways to do that, but not all on the back. But I think it's fair to consider a small percentage to the town, especially because it was a contest, it's trademarked by us. Um, just, you know, a consideration that I want the board to think about, when you do go into licensing agreements like this, they're not typically for free.
Yeah, yep.
Um, I would just recommend a small percentage, that's it, you know, obviously because you're a small business, I want to make sure that you succeed. Um, but certainly the success of that product will be of behalf of the designer that.
Yep.
As well.
Yep.
Um, just my, my thoughts. Open up, see if anybody wants to. Mrs. Canfield, do you have some thoughts?
I always get enough. Uh, thanks for coming in. Nice to meet you.
Yes, it's me.
Um, I love your business model. I love that it's promoting our community and it's spreading it far and wide. I think it's a great product. Um, I wanted to give the board a little bit of background, uh, just to remind some of the members more. On the board, when this story was designed, it was part of a art contest that is sponsored by the Treasure Collector. And we get a lot of, a lot of applications, or a lot of entries, and this was a local artist who, uh, donated her work to the community, uh, to, well, yeah, to the community.
Hmm.
We technically own it, but her business is art, and I am a little uncomfortable. I lo- I, I think your idea is fabulous. I think this current point about its property that the town, you know, to, to take public property for private enterprise makes me a little uncomfortable. Um, because it's public property, um, but I think this, it would make sense. The rub here for me is that the outlet, the entries for this contest were, were contributing to the town for public purpose. And to not address, um, that contribution, I'm not even, I'm not even sure. I know, yes, we would, I think there's certain compensation for this work. We technically honor the donation entitled to, but I'm a little uncomfortable that we, that wasn't part of the terms on which somebody gave that donation to the town. I'm making this like, so the artist drew this, accepted it, is honored to have it on the sticker, everybody loves it. Uh, but I, I feel a little uncomfortable down the road saying, we're going to give it to a public, a private business to profit from.
Yep.
So those are my concerns about how this is all.
Isn't she turning that over when she donated it?
Yeah, technically, we have every single right to do so. Um, but, you know, this is a local artist and I think, and, you know, I don't know, if she, if we had said, you know, turn around and license it, would there be a difference? I don't know. Um, but I think that this is important that the board be aware that there's that under-rental. We didn't pay a graphic artist, and that that would be much cleaner.
Right.
This was a donation, so I'm a little, and it's just small business, so I'm not sure if that's our business.
It's interesting.
Yeah, so I just lay it out there. I don't, I'd love to hear from the boards.
Does it?
Um, so I hear what you're saying, because I have questions about if we did this before, you know, because I've read through the agreement, it's like a four-page licensing agreement, and it looks pretty standard. Um, and I actually called to ask Michelle, the background of this, before we got to the meeting, and our attorney drafted the whole agreement, so. Um, and our attorney, it was clear we, the town owns, and then the artist did not, does not, so. I, I think it's great. I think it's great, but it is, you know, what is the, is the question of, should the town, should the town have a royalty fee?
Alright, so, I, the whole idea is fabulous, I think it's great. Uh, I'm less concerned. Um, I do, I do think there should be some sort of small royalty fee for two reasons. One, someone else has just copied that, they don't want their license. Oh, we're not charging them. Why would I agree with the process? You know, it's ridiculous. But two, it's like, you know, listen, I hope you sell a million. You sell twenty thousand, that's what everybody have, I mean, so we're not talking millions of dollars.
No.
Uh, but, you know, if any ever comes in, you can direct it in a place to, or to party, like, I don't even know, there's things you could do to honor that person's thoughts and emotions, and, you know, doing donations, if there's other options as opposed to not. I think I'm uncomfortable with it if there is some sort of small, uh, royalty fee.
And I'm saying there is, so, you know, large, large corporations are at seven and eleven. So, not even, in my opinion, not even consider stuff like that. I would say only four percent or two of the most. That's, that's what I'm thinking, if we even want to consider that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say I think that, um, the artist donated this to the town. Um, I don't know if she had expected compensation for it, however, because we own it and we have the right to license it. My suggestion would be the, the right place to make the donation. Um, or, or make, or send that revenue stream, so, um, I mean, even the EDC or something like that. Because the, the beach sticker is really, even without the dory, it's very identifiable.
Oh, it is.
When you're driving down Route Three, or you're on the turnpike, or wherever you are, oh, Situate. So, um, just the sticker itself is recognizable.
I like that it goes to the EDC.
Yeah, that's a very good suggestion, and.
Would you be available to, uh, a small royalty fee?
Yeah, absolutely.
If the board gets out there, better it is for us and the citizens.
It's also not a bad market that you, that you know, it's, yeah.
Right, right.
It's like.
Just back to the other, so. Karen, thoughts?
Well, I'm, I'm actually, I think I love their work, to do these things, but I just, you know, I feel a little uncomfortable. I wonder if I could, like, I don't know. What if you guys could, what if, if we were to, if I asked, if we were to ask that, you know, part of my, you know, the name of the artist, um, just so that she would at least get the credit for?
The name of the artist public now. I was showing the person one, and at that time.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's badly, she's a very renowned graphic artist. But I don't know, I don't know. Is that just trying to skin it too many ways?
Probably.
That's why I'm thinking.
I don't think the board, yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think she would expect, unless you've had conversations with us all.
No, I, I was, and is she, so she.
Is she concerned?
Is she concerned? Her concern is that is, this is how she makes her money, and to have her hard work out there, making somebody else money. If she's not happy about it, I don't think, you know, she's not gonna do it.
She's not here.
She's not, I know, I could look at the screen, I mean, that she'd call it, but, uh, uh, she was happy that I brought it to her attention, because it would be one thing to, to make this decision, and all of a sudden this T-shirt is showing up, and she'd say, wait, what happened?
Right.
To your point, though, you know, she understands that we own it, we, we have the right. Uh, it's a funny little gray area, you know, because of all the, I mean, it's not a gray area. We own it, we have the right to make a decision.
Well, we have a right to make a decision, whether we want to be, uh, respectful of her donation, it certainly could warrant just some further discovery and what. Like, if there's a cause that she, if she agrees that we put the royalty into the economic development, meaning, maybe that'll make her happy. Or is it to the Situate artist's mind, whatever, it's something maybe that would.
Well, I think we, because at the end of the day, we don't have to ask her, because we own it, right?
But I understand your concern.
Well, maybe, not to split this too fine, but maybe on the sea Situate, on the, any website that the town has to tell the story of how that was created and, and, and recognize the artist, um, that she gave it to us. But, you know, and, and my concern would be just for anyone who gives something to someone, is that it be used properly, and that there's no loose ends are everywhere, so, um, but I, just hearing what your business is, I doubt your, your business of, you saying what we're maybe, you know, letting you use in a, a district's special manner.
No, I went to art school, so I would never, uh, never, uh, heard of the artist, and I don't think it's a compliment to her, because her design is so well-recognized and well-liked.
Well, I think maybe putting it on the sea Situate and a couple other places in town, the story of the beach there. Including maybe on your own website.
Yeah, we're happy to. Yeah.
And recognize it for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thoughts? I mean, I, it's good, I get your thoughts.
Yeah, I feel comfortable, I think you understand the, that concern I feel. Yeah, I get it. Yep. We don't have the Mike Ronan at child. I can see where I have to know what I guess, make sure that she gets honored in that way, make sure. Right, I, I still come back in the back, this is, this is an asset, town, we have to leverage it to taxpayers, make sure that we can, do this all for the business. So, still support, two percent open.
Okay, I would, uh, comments, Michelle?
Hi. Um, I just wanted to point out, um, Karen mentioned sea situate, and that is a separate trademark.
Right.
That we do have, so I just want to.
Yeah.
Point that out, that the beach sticker was, was a separate. I do understand that. What I'm saying is to put information, but. Oh, absolutely. On. No, I just wanted to make sure, because there is a sea situate kind of whole different page. I just want, it gets confusing.
Yes.
So they both are similar, but I did try to buy town council, but there's no conflict with interest with our registered sea situate in it. And what, uh, damn, the.
More of a problem with that.
Just want to make sure that's okay.
Um, so, I'm hearing that majority of board is in favor with adding a small royalty fee. Uh, are you a mental two, two percent?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Um, were there any other issues in the licensing agreement that anybody had? It seems to be a big concern.
Okay, that was great.
Yeah.
Uh, it's very, okay. And, um, okay, any further discussion? I think if we can make a motion to amend the licensing agreement for a two percent royalty and not no, um, we should be, we should be set with making that change in the motion. Would you agree, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay.
And as far as the process of, maybe you guys, two percent, how do you put us that work?
Yes. No, I would say whatever works best for your business model, if you want to do it on a quarterly basis or an annual.
Or annual, yeah.
Alright, yeah, and we just track the sale of that particular design and just get it.
Yeah. Yeah, they can show us even sales on the annual basis, you know, two percent.
Sure.
Yeah. And if we need to define that further, two percent final sale price, um, not including tax, something. Yeah, all those things. Well, let's put that language, I'm looking at here. Let's make sure we put that language in there, too.
Yes, right, we dumped that one, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Perfect. Alright, do I, any other questions for you, Dan, for us?
I don't, no, covered.
I'm sorry, Susan.
I was just gonna say it's modifying number one in the, in the licensing.
Okay, perfect. Um, just somebody want to step up the motion?
We would look at the select board approve the use of the beach sticker logo and apparel produced in solar heritage for apparel. Uh, and further execute a license agreement for a two-year term. Would also be by amending terms of a two percent royalty license.
Okay. Uh, for what, yes, do we want to include a concession with these company dedicated to the, I don't know?
I don't think we have.
You can't do that.
Yeah, I think that would have to be separate, because when that establish word comes in.
It's gonna have some other suit comes out then.
Yeah.
Do I have to go free cash?
Because this is more of a licensing, um.
Do I have to go free cash, and then you grab, whatever that, whatever he gave, I should grab the free cash, that's the question.
Okay.
You can't dedicate a non-.
And we're looking for millions of dollars.
Millions, too.
Right. Alright, so there's a motion by, uh, Mr. Goodrich, a second by Susan Harrison. All in favor?
Aye.
Have you thought about the transfer speech?
You know what, my, I said that, you're like, um, maybe.
It's not a question. Well, it's a great venture. Thank you for your invite, and thank you for working with us on that, and, uh, we wish you, uh, all the success. And we'll make sure somebody in the show or, I mean, so we get in touch with you with regards to like that process, and we'll get you honestly updated.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Dan. I'm just getting a new sweatshirt. I need my whole.
Yeah.
Okay, next on our agenda, seven forty, still not too bad. Um, we have some recommendations from our lower waste commission, so we've got Dave Lee and Stephen Boner, our master here. And you're gonna talk about some dock boxes, update the dinghy waitlist policy, um, and do date change for commercial box, turn fishing in the hole, Stephen, say, four date.
Well, how are you?
Great.
Thanks for having us.
Dave, alright, do you want to just talk a little bit about, uh, the changes that you're looking to make?
So, uh, with dock boxes, we sent the, um, our changes that the select board had asked for, uh, last meeting, to town council. We got switched back. Uh, but town council did review it, and he came, uh, they came up with the final draft. Which, they were pretty happy with, uh, the direction that we had established. Uh, what he did really, he rearranged some of the, um, the paragraphs, uh, and just updated some of the, the language to help really satisfy the requirements of the, uh, town.
And you also wanted the commission to add this ability to re-verify.
Yeah.
The clearance.
We did. We, uh, we actually went. We did. We, uh, we actually went to the state of Massachusetts. He, uh, we had commissioners, uh, Chair Dugger.
Yeah.
Based here, uh, went through everything with one of our commissioners, Jason Koski. Uh, they went through it there, uh, he agreed and put something down, sent an email. Right, and they tracked that it was, it was accurate.
And these are only on the maritime centers.
Correct, that's correct, yeah. You know, Paul Parkway with the docks from there over. Yep.
Right. Okay. Um, any questions to the board with regards to the dock boxes? Okay. Um, so let's talk about the dinghies.
So, the dinghy list. The dinghy list has been a, a signup and put your name in on the list and it goes back to, uh, four, seven, eight months. So, you know, sixteen, seventeen, there it goes on this. Uh, it's very complicated. You call people and Mike Beers, he's in charge of assigning mornings and slips and dinghy spots. And he goes through it each year and he's calling people that have been on this alone, but they're in the lobby with us.
So are you moving into more of lottery every year, annual mixes?
Well, it's a two process. So what the plan is, is, uh, we're gonna make an announcement, if this is approved by you, that we'll put it on the town website and on our website as well that, um, on March twentieth at nine AM, you come into the Harbors Master office. And if you're in the existing waitlist, it's gonna be first come, first served. And we'll assign you a spot until they're gone. And after that, we're gonna put it on the August first slip waitlist stand for each year going forward. You know, and they, they're all waitlists.
So it's the reason why you hurt our site, but.
It's just, the dinghies, um, just people hold on to them and people have been on that waitlist forever, never, never. And then some got turned in, even, I mean, most of them turned in, I think higher than me getting here. It's just trying to get through that list. It's so old.
So let me just jump in here. Um, I, I put together justification.
Yeah.
I think you saw that, Mark. And the interesting thing about it is, uh, with Paul Parkway Marina, there are twenty-seven spots of a specific category. Seventeen were sold last year, ten were not utilized.
So that was my question, like, were those ten not utilized because of poor communication? Is that your thought? Or is there not a need for?
There's a need. I just don't think people were aware that there is, uh, that availability because of, it's an older system. So we wanna try to take the whole system and bring it up to the current waiting list for the other programs in the harbor. The waiting list, uh, very depending on the size of the boat for the, uh, marina, the marine centers as well as for the morgues. So just bring everything, you know, up to date with everything and hopefully, and what I also thought was really interesting for the maritime arena. Um, again, there were forty spots, uh, for a specific category, twenty-eight were sold, twelve were not. So if we could be making some more, uh, some more money to be able to fund some more, uh, projects, uh, down at the harbor. So we just wanna give people the opportunity to be able to utilize, uh, something that is available to them.
Where in the past, um, the morgues, you just have to come in every year and sign the book. And we got away from that and we started sending invoices. With the dinghy spot, you don't have to do anything. You just, your name goes on a list and it just stays there.
Yeah.
So what happens is, we'll age out, time out, and just work with the world.
This will be a consistent policy with regards to, and across all quarters. And when we're comment, then I'll turn it over. I, the justification for five hundred dollars, I think really, really steep to me. Especially since we have twenty-two that weren't open. So it's not like there's this high demand, um, for them. Now, you could argue the high demand isn't there because nobody knew about it. But then I think, okay, you put it up to five hundred dollars, I, I think five hundred dollars is steep. That's personal opinion.
Uh, it was, as you know, it was three hundred, um, for, um, non-residents and two hundred for residents. However, we did, uh, some research around the South Shore and found out those, those numbers were, our numbers were low. So we're just trying to be a little bit more with the times and the consistency around the South Shore.
And one of, with the, the, um, twelve to thirteen foot boat, you know, the twelve to, let's say fourteen feet, we go to the next level. On inches. At a local marine, you're paying twenty-one or twenty-two hundred dollars instead of a thousand.
Definitely questions here. A lot of marinas around us as well.
They're, they're almost tripling the fees, uh, that we have.
And that was in the.
Well, it's nice to be able to get up with the times, um, and know what we favorfully on, uh, these changes.
Questions? Okay, do you need a question, Karen?
I, I'm very confused. So we have unsold slips.
Dinghy spot, it's dinghy spot.
It's a dinghy dock. Spots.
Yeah.
We have unsold spots. We have a long waiting list. You're calling waitlist. You're calling it if, you know, if somebody's on the list. Why, why wouldn't they be, if they don't, if you offer them a spot and they're on the waiting list, why would they stay on the waiting list if they didn't want it?
Because they may not be with us anymore.
No, no, no.
And there's no, oh, they, no, those people get crossed out.
Yes, but what is, you call Joe.
It's that big, it's that big one. It's a lot. And you have to get people, you don't call up and say, we had some leaving messes. And if we don't get a call back after a leak, then you go to the next person.
You don't take them off.
And then you, if we know that they're gone.
Right.
Or we have called.
Forget that, forget that, right.
No.
Call Laura Curran and you say, hey, congratulations, you're next on the list to have dinghy spot.
Yeah.
And Laura says, I'm gonna be away this summer. I don't really want it. She's not removed from the list?
She may, or if she says she doesn't want it anymore, she's removed from the list, yeah, she's crossed out and you go, we don't keep going back and forth.
Okay, I guess that's where I'm confused.
It's, it's just a very, it's long list out.
It sounds like there are a lot of people on the list that just have it queued up, they don't answer. But I don't understand why we have so many open spots, but.
We're trying, a few years ago, Mike did a big push on this to try to get, you know, assign these spots. And, you know, I thought we got through it and when Dave, um, Dave Sukoski came in and spoke to Mike, he was the parent that he was, most spots were. You know, we did, Paul Parkway, we actually numbered all the spots, you know, very clearly. So we were able to figure out exactly how many boats fit.
So this is like resetting.
Resetting, coming up with a, a new system that works instead of trying to work with.
I don't bother you. Okay, so, so you're looking, instead of just saying, you're non-responsive, you're off, we're starting over. You're doing sort of the days in it? Is that?
Yeah, so what it is for this season, for this season, on March twentieth at nine AM, we open up. And if you come into the office, we'll assign you a dinghy spot until all the dinghy spots are filled.
But you're gonna say, no more waiting lists, people.
No more, and it's got, no more waiting lists, people. Uh, and then after that, moving forward every year, if you want a dinghy spot, you go on slip waitlist, just like all the other slip holders would, and ask for a dinghy spot. And each year, it will be a brand new list, just the way we give slips. Uh, which, a lot of towns do a real method on the slips where you just stay on this waitlist forever and it's really difficult to get through. Situates that annual, you know, August first signup is the best thing going because you have people that want a spot, that are ready to go, you know, have a vote, wanna do something. Rather than keep chasing people that just aren't responsive, really don't wanna, or just haven't made up their mind. We ran into this problem with the morgue notice, we could stay at the top of the waitlist forever. You know, and we changed it so that you got one passed and if you pass a second time, you got, you didn't get removed to the back, you got removed. And it cleaned up the morgue list.
Susan, ask, who is on the board?
Yeah.
Of mine, you're.
I, I just wanna say a couple things. I, this is a mess. I honestly think I agree with the presentation that it needs a reset, right? We have to reset and make, and people are used to the process we have for, for slips and lines. And it's got to align. It doesn't align with that. The, the list is too big. Um, and if you, if you were to, like, in their defense, if they were to call like fifty people and then they've got too many people that they ought to, uh, slip to, you know, reset to. So, so it's like very complicated. So I agree with the complete reset. I also think the fees are low compared to, um, neighboring towns. And honestly, like, I wanna do this as soon as possible because twenty-two people not have, could have access to a, a dinghy dock, which is big, I mean.
It'll fill.
It's a big deal. The people that want these are deep on the list. So if you just reset, the right people will come in. And, um, so I'm, I'm, I think they've done their homework. I, I recognize it's a mess, but I think it's, I don't think it can be fixed the way it is.
We wanna push it out to March twentieth.
Yeah, immediately.
So we can advertise it starting tomorrow morning on the website, on the town's website. And, and we believe that word will spread like wildfire because we just started kinda talking about it. And we're getting people coming in.
Okay, I think we also should probably do some sort of an email list blast with the messaging, just make sure it's all consistent. Because you just don't wanna run into, they won't verify that, that it changed, right?
I don't even know if we have email, these people could.
No, you don't have to, but just put it, the town email blast that goes out to five thousand people, whoever it is.
Email place.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, whatever our, our communication path is. Don't just rely on your. Right.
I have my marina customers and my morgue customers and Tom Pierre and everybody.
Whatever. I just think it's gotta be effectively communicated just so we don't anger folks that have been sitting on it less forever.
Harbors Master's office has put together a social media campaign to help promote this. Uh, so, so they're all ready to go. I talked to Mike Beers about it today. He's ready to go. He'll be managing that program. He'll send it out through constant contact.
Okay. And?
Is there any reason that we don't do this? Why don't we collect a deposit for someone to be on the waitlist? Well, again, agencies, tickets, you have to put down fifty dollars. And then you apply.
It's because this would be a year to year like the marinas. So every year you come in and sign up and your spot, depending on how fast you're over the computer, it may change. You know, you might be really fast, this year a little slow, you know, last year. And we're not keeping people.
So there's no. So this is definitely no more of us.
No more waitlist.
No more waitlist.
For the marines paying for dinghies. There's still waitlist, obviously, but that work, you know, like, I'd rather be at the morgue. I'm gonna stay on that case.
Five.
Five dollars a year to stay on those, yes. Twenty dollars to sign up. And, and it's just, it's a way.
That's a nuisance fee. I mean, that's.
It's a, it's a, what was happening in, we had people that would say they came in to sign a book and they were told they didn't need to sign the book.
Oh, yeah.
It was a problem. To track people. So we knew you still wanted a morgue. And it was check or credit card only. So you could say, I did. We don't take or anything other than X. All I can afford, make up the difference on ice and shadows.
Okay. Any other? Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm still somewhat perplexed that you could have a huge waitlist with ten spots that never got used. So.
We've been, we've been trying, Mike's been trying.
Well, it seems like if you start fresh and you just assume you can call the seventeen people, however many it is that signed up this past year.
What about the people that signed up five years ago that still want on it or eight years ago or twelve years ago that they're made not be on the list?
Steven, can you tell them how many are on the list?
I don't know.
Uh, are we talking five hundred?
I, I honestly, I don't know. I, I don't know. A list is managed by, you can know.
Okay. All right, well, let's agree, we're moving forward, reset it, let's give it a try. I, I don't disagree with anything that anybody says. It's like it's been a little bit of a, like, a challenge. Uh, so let's.
We've been doing a lot of work trying to fix a lot of stuff.
Yeah, 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 that's good. All right, so I think everyone's clear on your initiative. Any further questions about the solution?
We're on the marketing and we're just to make sure people know, so I have an email and also just a little promo call. Possibly all those numbers that you got through the comments, address one of your interests. Another option, just to think about. Thank you.
Okay, then the third initiative that you're looking to do is just to change the date, Nancy, yeah?
Yeah.
You guys want it?
I just tell them, make sure you're.
Yeah, 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 that'd be great. Um, and the third one is a date change, just a payment change?
Yeah, so payment due date change for the commercial lobster and commercial fisherman. And commercial lobster with limited entry permit, with commercial fisherman with limited entry permit. Uh, I, I'm recommending that we change their due date from April fifteenth to June first and the late date of, uh, June, uh, June thirty. This way we stay in our fiscal year.
Okay.
But we're giving these people breathing room.
An opportunity to get going.
You have, you, um, restrictions on days at sea. You have, uh, limits on catches, there's closures with the lobster. It's getting more and more difficult for these people to make a living. And to, to send a bill out, it's due in the middle of April, when they haven't worked. I just don't think, I honestly don't think it's right.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your sensitivity to that.
They have to provide me with, you know, the limited entry fishing license, which we need, have the commercial, you know, access anyways. And I, I just think gives a breathing, breathing room. It, it's what situate was built on, it's a commercial fisherman, it's here in the lobster. And we need it.
Nancy, you don't have any issues with that, right? To get the revenue in a little bit later? Yeah, we should be okay.
And Waterways voted unanimously, ruled with this.
Well, they voted unanimously, so.
And I.
I don't disagree with you. I think it's great. I think it's, you know, sensitivity to the state of our fishing industry, commercial fishing industry and lobstering and. Um, does the board have any additional commentary or questions?
I only, I really support this. I do wanna point out the, the commercial fisherman came to ask for this too.
I was speaking with one of the guys in LA.
Presented at the meeting and this is literally the worst time for them to pay about. So I'm, I think anything we can do, um, to help, and it's also, I mean, we have twenty, twenty.
So there's about, uh, ten, uh, fishing boats on the pier and you'll probably have forty to fifty.
So it's.
We have climbers and scullers.
Okay, do what we can do.
Absolutely. Aside, Karen's good. All right, do we wanna walk through the motions? We have three of them, I think. Does anybody else in the audience have any questions, concerns? Saying none. Um, Susan, do you wanna make the motions?
Sure. Page sixty-seven. A motion to approve the recommendation by the Waterways Commission to update the procedures for the dinghy waitlist. Um, also a motion to approve dock boxes and fees at the Citro American Center Marina. And also a motion to approve the date change of payment to June first annually for commercial fishermen and lobster and limited entry permit goals based on Citro, based on Citro.
Motion by Susan Harrison. Second by Andy Goodrich, just point of order. Does anybody have an issue with taking these three motions out at the same time? Okay, so, Amber?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The commercial fisherman.
We cherish the moment there, so.
And I bet you the dinghy people, thank you, thank you for, Susan.
For the twenty-two, the twenty-two people that will.
Susan has been great and every time I talk to you, absolutely. So thank you very much for your help. You've been great.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna miss you.
I know you'll be around. I know you'll be around.
Thank you.
Very nice. Okay. Sorry, Chris, I'm a little late, you don't come. So next on our agenda is our Chair of the Capital Planning Committee to speak about the committee's recommendation for the Cushing Elementary School project, so Chris Cushing, our Chair. It's happened. Oh, and looking back, yeah.
I hate to tell you, but I don't think it's gonna take up my whole entire ten minutes either, so. Um, good evening, thank you. Uh, Capital Planning Matt with the school many people. Uh, on February twenty-eighth, we had presentations about the building and everything. Um. A thorough grilling by the committee. And we have one member who typically pushes back against schools. He had a lot of questions and he's also been attending the public forums. And all of his questions have been answered recently, so when we came to vote at our next meeting, it was unanimous vote. Uh, again, this member, you know, agrees that we need this project. The way the costs were explained were cleared up for him. Uh, he had questions regarding regarding the eight-five million number that's been thrown around, the sixty-two million number. Uh, and we were able to explain those to his satisfaction and um he wasn't, like I said, a unanimous vote. To recommend.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, any additional issues that anybody brought up or feel it's?
No, there was um.
Support, and you didn't have some vote in support of the solution as well? Not just the capital investment, like.
Yeah, yes, yeah, you, uh, the entire combining of the two schools and everything, yes. Because we're able to, we have a solution for the Cushing site. You know, we are able to incorporate the funding for that and the roadwork and all of that under and on the cap that we had set. Um, no, they were very satisfied and we all hate the fact that it's not working, but because we're able, you know, do all of that under that cap, within that cap. Uh, we were all very satisfied with, um, I don't think there was any the other dissension, do you remember any dissension? It was, you know, real clean, I mean, it was thoroughly discussed and I mean, you know, we rolled them and I think it's a good project.
Well, I wanna thank you, you've participated in numerous meetings and this capital planning, but all the school building meetings and some of even the subcommittees, I believe you've taken the time to go really educate, challenge, and it's been a good challenge, and that's what taxpayers need, so thank you for that.
Thank you, I've enjoyed it, it's a, I'm a nerd, but.
Well, you asked good questions and uh so I think the architects and the the designers who are looking, I appreciate the challenges.
No, I think had the presence, you know, as we rolled out their presentation of some of it, some of those has gotten better also, we're getting better, clearer interpretation.
Uh, questions for Chris?
So, no, I don't want to say any questions, but you know, to Morris's point, thank you for all of the input, um, because I think that hopefully when we get to town meeting, it will be, you know, successful. And it's got a lot to do with all of the meetings, there's so many people that we're both trying to and ask the right questions. Um, so hopefully by the time we get there, all of the hard work of the committee and all the other committees in town, you know, will will help us.
But the biggest, the biggest issue, you know, with, you know, our one, you know, not the center, but you know, with that one member, you know, he had all these questions that having been in the meetings, you know, like, well, that question was, you know, we 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 drilled into that and came out of that and we solved that already, we've solved this question, we've solved that question. And it's kind of disappointing, it seems like lack of participation from everybody else asking these questions. Uh, I I hope at town meeting, you know, when we do this, that we have, you know, we told them, we've had a whole night, one topic. You know, we need to tell the entire story, you know, of how this happened. Uh, and I think if we were able to do that at that meeting, I think we should be all right.
Yeah, I know it's a painful process for the proponents, but better to go through it, through all of these meetings and all of the hard questions being asked numerous times in various forms, so that, you know, the citizens feel that this town meeting is thoroughly vetted by these people. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything, anything else?
No.
Chris, thank you, thank you for your dedication and all your your volunteerism. Everybody better for it. Have a great night.
Oh, she's here, someone else do this. No, wait.
Yes, it's okay. All right, so next we have our special town meeting warrant. Um, Jim and Nancy, we have the first warrant for the special town meeting, we have some copies in our. For it back, uh.
It looks like you all signed everything last week. That.
Yeah, I've seen my names on like, you know, you sound. That's what happens when you when you're out of town. Um, okay. Um, so we have to actually vote through this final one, correct? So really, no big changes, right? Um, town council made some changes after um this was given to you, which I gave up. They hand out, they corrected the missing, uh, money on hand?
Yeah.
So often.
Oh, yes, okay.
And they added the phrase after the Cushing School uh address of including the payment at all costs incidental and related there to the project. So.
Where's that, this one is just the uh the school one?
Just on the school after the Cushing Elementary School at One Aberdeen Drive.
Okay.
There's a comma and then that phrase, that town council conservative, I apologize, town council's comments came back yesterday, so. Time is everything.
Oops. Okay.
And at the next meeting, we'll have to re-vote the valid question to include the same language.
Okay.
Nice, these two are just with the school. Yeah, right, so these two are just with regards to the special town meeting for the school on April twenty-ninth. Um, any other comments?
Karen? Yeah, I I do have a question. Um, we did receive information asking us to move moving some of the spent funds from the the other projects to the school. That's, yeah, that's the next agenda, I don't love that, but the language and the art seems very specific and I'm wondering if the amount of money that that was proposed to us to transfer here is included in this number of here.
No, that's the total cost of the project, including the feasibility study, which must be reflected by the MS, for the MSBA to move forward.
But we did not reduce the total amount, we did not reflect the amount that we're looking at potentially.
I don't think we legally can, I think you have to put the amount of the total project for MSBA.
Correct.
And then it would be in the motion transfer from.
Right. Okay, it's not here.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, it's just there.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew?
Well, that was asked for.
Okay. Susan? Harris, that's. All right. So, um, we do need to vote to approve the April twenty-ninth special town meeting warrant um as written. Um, do I have a motion, oh, do I have to read this motion? Loop to recommend or is this a suggested motion for the floor?
No, that's this is your motion.
This is her tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, loop to recommend the new consolidated Cushing Elementary School project for one hundred and nineteen million four hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars for the design construction and equipping of a new consolidated Cushing Elementary Elementary School on the site of the existing Patali School at seventy-two Pinahile Road, including the demolition of the existing Patali elementary school on that site and the demolition of the existing Cushing Elementary School at One Aberdeen Drive, which school facility shall have anticipated use for life as an educational facility for the instruction of school children for at least fifty years. By second, second. Motion by me, second by Karen Owen. Any further discussion? While favor?
By I.
Um.
And who will, who will, uh, who will be the opponent for this opinion? Which side won?
Um, I'm happy to. I'm not gonna be able to speak it. There, I can take it. Or we can give to not to get it.
Well, this is a whole different thing. It's a whole different thing, this is the, this is the only show, yeah.
Only show on town.
Yeah. So that's fine. Sort of.
I was just saying, you can say opposite in the same time.
Okay. Where's my stickler? Okay, so we're all good with that, all right. Yes, Steven, how are you?
Good, how's it all doing?
We're great, Steven is our Chair of Public Buildings Commission, he's going to provide us a little bit of an update and status of all of the public building projects that you've been overseeing over the past few years.
Some good news again, thank. So yeah, thank you, uh, for sure, uh, thank you, Kennedy, for working with the numbers here. So yeah, we have four key projects to close out, basically, that have been going on for like some years here, so we're happy to kind of happy to bring them forward. Turn and bring any fun back over to town here, hopefully get this, do what they see fit with it. Uh, so the library, you know, was a good project, you know, some challenges along the way and and I was really glad we got to see it through the end and and with the addition of the generator recently to build some, you know, resilience and need in the site and, you know, it it's a lot of safety back in those things, that's good. Uh, that project was officially closed up at PBC on one twenty-three, two thousand and four. Um, budget, you know, with with some contingency remaining, there was some good donations and grants to the project. Uh, so that project had one hundred thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-one cents remaining, but on the budget. Any questions in the library or something?
Well, the comment here, Nancy's saying that um Kevin's looking to reserve this for replacement of the some exterior.
He was, and he never, he never, he never brought the pride to the public building.
It's still in need.
It's still in need and we have an allocated quarter of twenty-five thousand five hundred.
Okay. But we're not looking for them to close out those funds yet.
It's for your consideration on the next item.
Okay. Um. Just like to tell the residents that this project can be on budget.
Yes.
Which is true, so thank you for your oversight and it's beautiful building and continues to be well in paint, which is great.
That's great. Uh, public safety complex, again, you know, well-run project, it was, you know, good scope development, good estimation by Vertex. Uh, you know, we work closely with the owner rep to make sure, you know, the project was kept on time, schedules and managed, but didn't bunch. And projects are good at it. There's still a little bit of work to do, um. There's some open uh HAC items in the EOC room, there's a little additional uh HAC needed there on design days, uh, so this of thirteen, thirteen, thirteen thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars left and uh HAC work to do there, but uh still coming in under budget for the project, the project was officially closed by PBC on zero two twenty-seven, two thousand and four. Uh, so this one, again, a little under budget coming in at uh with the remaining funds of two twenty-two thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Yes.
Any questions, this will be on.
Any questions on that?
No? No, great.
Thank you.
Uh, Hummer Fire Station, again, that was a good project, you know, it was a speckle kind of prefab house with a with a kind of a barn attached with, so, you know, did a nice job, approved, you know, kind of laying out scope and estimate and pricing and, you know, it was a well-run project again. Um, that project was officially closed on one twenty-three, two thousand and four. Uh, and believe it or not, it came on exactly on budget, so zero, zero dollars left at zero.
Excellent.
Any questions?
I don't think there are a lot of towns that can host uh this many public projects come in on or under budget, so congratulations to you all.
Yeah. And last but not least, the Senior Center and Veterans Memorial Gym, uh, that's the most recent project, again, it it was a good, a good project, we we kind of maintained a lot of contingency in the project due to the parking there and some, you know, potentially parking design and rekind of restructuring, but it uh it 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 did need it fortunately, so it was part of kind of monitoring, spread and passed and everything's good. I think there was some extra funding baked into that project with the COVID, it was during COVID, some big and a little bit of extra money for uh material pricing and kind of work hours, uh, with the six feet distancing, instead of, we're gonna have to stay here, some some kind of two shifts, but we actually needed, so there was some saving there. Uh, so good, you know, efficiency and project management and keep things going and and. There's that one remaining open PO for that property with uh, for just some light dimmer that they needed to to bring some more function out of this, the sun, so, you know, the lights are on and off, they wanted some dimmer, dimmer capabilities here, so it's a little over five thousand dollars in open POs for that project, it was officially closed on two twenty-seven, two thousand and four. Uh, the total remaining funds in that project, which is pretty nice to see, is three hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents.
And there are no additional needs in the, that will lead to the growth up there? Would that be able to be expended by this fund or go? Not sure. I'm sorry?
I don't know what the spending was, really only.
Kevin had a couple, Kevin had a couple little things, but nothing else.
Significant, yeah.
Yeah, we don't know what significant it will be, because.
I know we have control, work, you want to.
Parking, additional parking, the study that was done, that did not require, I think what did not require the installation, additional parking. You can still do it, but then you're gonna have an issue with recreation, who's very concerned about cutting further for that field, taking it further for that field, so just started wanting to get the Peter Rust polish if you do that, but could still do that, that's probably the last big thing.
Yeah.
That's the last big thing.
Well, I guess maybe that's the discussion for the next agenda, I don't know, just wanna think about that with potential future work on that, what we'll all say.
Yeah. So yeah, given your grand total of uh four hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand fifty-four cents of uh returns for the project, so. Uh, yeah, I'm happy with the team, Orange, everybody on the board, a great, a great display of members.
And are you still meeting now since the transfers, the water treatment plant is?
You've been assigned it, yeah.
I'm gonna probably lose that building a little bit as well.
Okay, so you get a little bit of a breeder.
Yeah.
I'm busy.
Yes.
Any questions with Steven?
So, the public building commission does not oversee the school destruction.
We have a member on the board, so yeah, I can, Joe and he's been having those meetings.
That's right. Yeah, school building.
Well, we do have a representative, we can take it.
And do we have a report from them that will tell us what kind of money is left for the school, from the school, from the middle school?
It will be in the next agenda, okay. Just jumping ahead here, sorry. Um, any questions for Steven?
No, this is great, great, appreciate it.
Great, Karen, anything?
No, I just, I, the only question is, how long have we been on this floor? That's.
Yeah, I've been here, man, I think so.
I see a lot of waters.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you, you're so.
Absolutely, yeah.
You've done a great job, yeah.
Appreciate your expertise.
Absolutely.
Um. What do we need to vote? You you just don't have to vote, you're just accepting the public building commissions for four on the. You, you just don't have to vote, you're just accepting the public building commission's report on the.
Okay.
Closeout of the votes.
Move to accept, um, the public building commission's report, um, regarding the status of the, uh, projects of course. Library, public safety complex, our, our stations and senior center and veterans. Is that any? Seconded by Susan Harrison, all favor?
Bye.
Thank you, Steven, thank you.
Great, absolutely.
And thank the rest of your, uh, commission.
I will. Good night.
You too. Thank you. All right, so now the available funds. Some questions have already popped. So I'll just do a little more question.
So to answer one of his comments questions, the school committee voted last night to recommend that the unspent middle school proceeds of one million eight hundred thirty-four dollars, six hundred and seventy-one dollars be included in the motion to offset the impact of the Christian Catholic school at the April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four special town meeting. Uh, another question that I'm aware has come up and why haven't these funds been allocated to the water treatment plant at the time we load the water treatment plant? And the reason was they weren't available. So the four projects that you've heard before on tonight were only closed out by public building commission in January, February of this year, calendar year. And the middle school would have opened litigation, which only resolved two months ago. So that's why none of those projects, unspent proceeds were ever used or opposed to be used for the water treatment plant.
So why couldn't we, explain to us why we couldn't allocate the four sixty-one to the water treatment plant now of this children?
You absolutely could and have it on, uh, fall special town meeting, um, and, and allocate them at that time. My only, uh, reason for bringing it forward now is we have another debt exclusion that's coming with water public and I'm always concerned with, and I know that everyone else is also, uh, concerned with the impact it is on, on citizens. So where these funds are now available, it depends on how the boards and the, the select board and the school committee want to recommend. Uh, that's why I made the same recommendation to the school committee with the full proceeds to see what they're good at, what their recommendations. There's also going, should be some more MSBA proceeds when the middle school closeout is done by the MSBA, that that could pick up to sixteen months and then all started two months. So we absolutely could say, no, we don't want to do, uh, allocate those funds as part of the motion at the April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four special town meeting and prefer to take it to the special town meeting in the fall. Either way, it's saving, uh, it's definitely saving citizens' funds if it goes to water treatment plant. Potentially if that project for the Christian Catholic were to come forward, it would save citizens up there as well. My concern is that, um, we are already being penalized by the IRS for those senior center funds not being spent down. So those funds have to be allocated to some other project, preferably a debt exclusion project such as the water treatment plant, so we can get them spent, so we don't penalize for it.
Oh, interesting. So that was maybe my question, is we want to have a solution for the case, the old case building. You know, would it be, would we be able to tap into this parking piece to help offset costs? Or whatever we might do there in a future state?
I would recommend that you not do that. Because by the time you get that solution comes forward, you may have been penalized a whole amount of dollars.
No, I don't think so. Yeah, that's pretty.
Um, it's going, well, if we also were drawing attention to ourselves by that IRS, what do we want to do?
Yeah, so what do we need to allocate? Most people think of the hospital, so the IRS is saying, okay, we have to allocate this. So if we allocate it to the water treatment plant, we have to go until.
We have to spend it.
With the. So you can't spend it either way if we do it. And there's no other mechanism for us to move this out to some other, I look. I'm trying to get what possible, whatever are real possibilities besides this? Any other way to get that to put it in the capital anywhere else? What, what could we do?
Um, your other alternative, which with, uh, what you're saying right now that we could do is these funds were borrowed, uh, for twenty years for a project, projects that have a useful life, um, of over twenty years. So we could only move those funds to another like project. Uh, a project of that size would be the high school locker rooms, which is on the capital plan for, um, just over a million dollars of borrowing. The impact of moving, just changing a motion, the motions are internalized and posted, so it's not like we're gonna hit deadline of that. Uh, is that this is debt exclusion money exempts up two and a half, so the amount of the debt service is added to the taxes above and beyond. If you move it to a project that's within our tax helping, that means we have to add it to our debt service budget and it's coming out of our limited resources brought to an, of, of the body. So something else is gonna have to be cut in. That was really, I think you were terribly sorry about that. But that's why you don't want, that's why not, not necessarily because I gave you a dead exclusion money to a non-debt exclusion project. Even the full amount of this, no, it's just a proportionate amount of the debt service that we do over the next fifteen to twenty years that are left on these projects. Are they the running numbers?
Sorry. No, sorry. Uh, I mean, I, I don't propose that we hold it off to keep it on the town side of people though, since the gates people, since you've got one way coming from AIDS project on the school side, government forces schools. I'd like to see this very offset a couple of treatment, but, um, I'd like to consider that, that if we're not gonna realize penalties by waiting and voting, um, special town meeting in the fall, doesn't sound like we would.
We potentially low hit another six month penalty mark.
Which is what?
Oh, the last one is twelve thousand dollars.
That's a lot.
No. It doesn't mean that if this were to be appropriated at the special town meeting for the school that we could spend the money any faster than what we could on the water treatment plant? You know, six months from now? It depends on if there were architect rules for that amount.
A comment, I don't. I'd like to hear a little more why, I, I, I don't look at this as a school budget pile and a town side pot, you know? Because at the end of the day, it's every resident's gonna be paying that exclusion for these projects. So.
Different intervals. Right? Like one doesn't kick in until one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, the, when they roll out, yeah, so I, I get, I get that, I would, my preference would be to put it to the one that we're gonna bond to. You know, uh, keep the cost level as much as we can. But if, if there's a cost, if there's a penalty to doing that, to delay and we have a mechanism in which to do it sooner rather than later, it's all the same pocket that, the, the, that we're paying out of, so I don't, I'm not concerned about that. We're all gonna pay for both.
I didn't realize we had a film as well.
So you guys can't go quite, the board crew um, vote to recommend it be part of the motion for the April twenty-ninth, twenty-four, oh, I keep saying it wrong, four. Uh, town, special town meeting. And if that project is not moved forward from either that or the ballot vote, that doesn't preclude you from still having a special town meeting article to then move the funds to the water treatment.
At the same time or at the fall special town?
At the fall special town meeting.
But then the interim would be allocated. Correct. And the motion, if the, if some reasons will be forward, right? We might just do it again, but we don't get penalized. What?
Politically, it's gonna bother me because I know for a fact that we'll be sitting here next year or the year after looking for another fifty, sixty thousand dollars or something for the library. And we're gonna have to pay it, we can't. We guarantee you that there's gonna be some, we, that, that three hundred and thirty-nine thousand is ten percent of the asbestos that we know we need, right? It just, it seems so often a, that there's a half, two things. One, that we're hearing about this IRS P now, I don't, how do we not see this coming? Two, um.
Well, we always have balances at the end of the project that we have to assess, that's not.
If the product, the mine is not released, so there was nothing we could do.
Go ahead.
So I, I just, I just feel like it's gonna be irresponsible to just put it towards one other project that we know for a fact this money was allocated, people voted for that for that spent money to maintain it, or to make sure that everything is gonna be okay, just.
But we can't keep it there, right? You do, you don't have to ultimately close it out?
I would recommend you not keep it there, but to, um, Mr. Viverge's point, I think it's how you perceive the funds. My perception is that, that the voters voted it to build the project. They didn't vote it to maintain the project going forward. And that has come up, especially with public building, is Steve, Steve still here?
Yeah.
Oftentimes someone has come forward with one of these projects and said, we wanna do X, Y, or Z, and they're like, yeah, maybe that's not us.
Right.
Yeah, it works around.
Susan?
I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I have questions on the fines and how, like, how are they assessed? How do we know ahead of time? Like, is it every six months you gotta find or is it a monthly filing?
Um, you know, it's not a monthly fine and it's, uh, we use full top advisors as our financial advisor, but we also use them as our arbitrage advisor. So every time we're coming up against a deadline and this is a deadline for every ban we've ever issued and for every one we've ever issued, they will ask for a spending report and then they'll calculate based on the investment income that we have and what we spent and was remaining unspent, whether or not we're, uh, potentially in an arbitrage risk. So that's why we're always leading up the old balances, that's why the department has to know that I park, you know, we need the cash flow before we borrow. Uh, especially in the, uh, library and senior center, both of those projects had donations.
Yeah.
And in the senior center case, we had sold, we had multiple auctions, so we had unknown amounts of money coming in. But they came, some of it came in after we did the final borrower.
So is there a way to communicate regarding the fines to not be assessed the fines?
Yeah, to spend, spend the money.
The only, but, okay, so I see that, but then we can't close a PO because, we can't close because we've got open POs, right? Or one had, there was some, we were presented.
Well, we're looking to close the four sixty-one, the eighteen, nine, two, two, and we'd open to pay those undercover POs, right?
Correct. And if you decided to.
And then one, there was an, there was some sort of loss, right?
Yeah, it was the middle school.
So where there were like, okay, but there are reasons why we don't close it. So there's no way to get out of the funds?
There's no way to get out of the funds and we self-report. So we do the calculation, if we find that we're in violation, we self-report, we pay, um, what we have to pay. We don't wait for the IRS to find us, because if they find us, then they slap a huge penalty. Uh, so. It, it's six and one half this and the other, I, I'd rather, you know, say, oops, I'm sorry, I made a mistake, here's our, here's our penalty.
Yeah.
Including the IRS and have a, a history of doing that.
Okay. But we don't know when the next one would be.
Really just that, all this time, the library, which I do not consider maintenance for security, for our security and everything. And that's not, did we use any of that money for the library, the technology? It was a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, so we put the library with the generator. No, it was just.
Then why wouldn't the generator come out of this?
We get it, that's a lot of money.
Oh, okay, I understand.
No, when Mike Michel came in and we had just offered our expert agreement for the security closes. It was like, just follow that way. So is that taken out of there?
No, no, it's that, I mean, that's. It's, that's what Nancy was saying, it's the, that was an upgrade. Building was built, I know, I mean, where do you draw the line?
Who, who makes that call?
Probably wouldn't be the definition of what you have to spend the money. Because that doesn't have the lifespan, twenty years, which is part of the building for that technology, it's not a twenty-year lifespan.
But if we did it at the onset of the project.
It is part of the project, it was part of the project, yeah.
Right.
The project's been done, the structure's over, we went out of there for.
So you can't keep just dipping into the.
So I put it in the pool.
The generator was actually in the original scope.
It was, yeah.
And that's why you were called and that's.
Then we had a way forever to get it. Right, yeah. Just, just didn't come in.
And all other projects is different because Slack board controlled off the, the, the money. Remember there was money being held back out of Slack board, so when the generator came along, Kevin came before you and you released funds to the public building commission for the generator. The other projects, they controlled all the funds and the public building commission makes the decision whether or not that falls within the scope of the building project. Library falls with you.
I don't think those would method apply, I would say, just by opinion, but.
I mean, it's that sort of, Karen?
Yeah, so the, in the case that the public safety building, we know that the technology in the, whatever we call Joseph Morgan um, space has never worked as it should have from the get-go. Um, and it just seems to me as though that, what is left there could be put toward that. I think they're doing something in that room to improve the technology.
Yeah, I would, I would make the same argument. We built the building, we bought the technology, now we're replacing the technology that we already bought as part of the project.
Because the technology probably wasn't that smart.
But I, I just don't think that new purchase, it's replacing stuff that we already purchased. My opinion, I don't think that means twenty years.
And who are the keepers of, like, interpretation of the fair government law? Is it state or government law, is it like, what do you, what do you reference?
That's relative to your borrowing requirements. If you borrow money, you can only use that money that you borrowed. If you finish that project and it's twenty years, you can't use it on something that's only ten years, you have to use it on a project for which you can issue your bond on the like side, I love that state statute, or that's the ruling when you borrow the money in terms of borrowing of cash. But that is a, a hot and fast rule. You can't borrow something for twenty-five years and then buy a truck. With that one, because.
All right, so on the.
We do have facts that we have for twenty years, but.
All right, so, so on the other hand, it seems to me as though what we are saying is, is that we could, if we wanted to, take the remaining funds that are, have not been allocated and put them toward the water treatment plant because it is a
Twenty years.
Big project, twenty years, et cetera, et cetera.
And it's also a debt exclusion.
Right. So it's got all the right parameters. So we could do it, we're not understanding if there's ever the charge of twelve thousand dollar penalty that we'll drop.
We may not, we may not get another twelve thousand dollar penalty, it also depends on the interest rates.
All right, so that's not a.
No, that, you guys see how much the last, the last one was twelve thousand dollars.
So they're penalizing the interest we earn from having that money?
Yes.
So it's not that we're losing the money, we're losing the interest we're gaining.
Yes.
In the bank, if I'm understanding that correctly.
You're right.
Oh, okay.
Because you made the comment, there'd be no money left, so I was like, how would there be no money?
You can't borrow money at two percent, then when the interest rates go up, you'll make money.
I know, I know.
There is a schedule, when you borrow money.
So, no, I get it, I.
Certain period of time you need to spend it, but.
I was lost on my comment, like, wouldn't have any money left.
And, and, and the penalty is not coming out of the project funds, it's coming out of the debt service.
Right, so we're not losing the money, we're losing the interest we are getting.
Very different.
So, you know, all right, so we've heard Karen Cantfield's position that it, hearing that now, Karen, you know, what are your, what are your thoughts? And I get it, it's not enough for us to stand, but it's my, my opinion, it is gonna hit us at different times so that we can reduce the water treatment plant that all like, as well. Is there a project that needs to be rolled public building projects?
Yeah, as I said, my, my preference is put the money where it's going to impact people first, or, you know.
Isn't that the water treatment plant?
Yeah, yes, it is. As, right, with the nuance of that, yeah. If we're not.
Right, so it's gonna come online before the school building?
Well, I, I mean.
Whatever.
Okay, can you get us together?
I'm a little smartly bit to this. The water treatment plant is financed through the Clean Water Trust. We've already filled out our loan paperwork for our next phase of loans with the Clean Water Trust. We have not identified the potential of these funds. It's not a big deal, we can identify the potential of these, if these funds, you know, we decide to allocate and they get voted at the fall special town meeting for the final, uh, borrowing. But the Clean Water Trust borrowing for the water treatment plant is two. But the Clean Water Trust borrowing for the water treatment plant is two to two point four percent. Potential borrowing for. The Cushing Haven School would be at a higher percentage rate.
Alright, so there are no fees to put it in that.
We'll start construction on the water treatment plant spending first. But once the school is approved, they will start spending on final design right away.
Sure.
So both projects will be spending money this summer.
Right. When the school money you want to bet.
Yeah.
It is.
It is going to be a higher rate.
The only thing to consider. It's not a dark, dark market, is that it's the also the complexity and all the different numbers, so whatever happened to that?
Yeah.
At the town, at town meeting. That there's going to be this one pushing boat, there's going to, excuse me, this one Gates money, and then this month now, there's two pools in one person now. This would complicate the issue, I think, on the school project.
Because it would just be in a motion, it would just be in a motion.
It would just be in a motion.
Four hundred and sixty one thousand from this, one point eight million from Gates.
Well, yeah, I, I would recommend them changing any of their detail. They can say to be offset by these other projects. But the, the one point eight million that the school committee um recommended to be put included in the motion counts for twenty dollars on that eight sixty three. So we're not talking, even if you did everything, it's probably a twenty five dollar in the first year.
Yeah, I understand, but it's still.
It was the same motion used for the water treatment plant. That's why we're using the opera funds.
Yes.
Almost kind of the opera funds, I'll say, but we didn't say X amount of opera fund, just said offset of the state federal, blah, 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 blah.
No, but I'm still uncomfortable putting it that way.
So you prefer to go to the water treatment? In my.
Yeah, I mean, it's a guarantee. No, I mean, that's. I just. But yeah, that's where.
That's right, that's where you are.
Yeah. Well, because if it fails at the beginning, then we go.
Yeah, it's just, but we, yeah, we know it's a done deal. We know we can take taxpayer money. It's guaranteed savings today. We know that, we know. Yeah, they come sooner than the savings people have, they, rest of that money, it's just.
But I, you know, I, if, if we go the other route, if we say. Let's go as recommended with the school. Which is more expensive money, doesn't happen. And then they have, you know, then we're six, not even, six months later allocating it to the water treatment. We're not paying for the water treatment. We're not on, you know, borrowing the money.
No.
Right away, so if it's still in it, and to me, you're, you're kind of rolling the dice on the more expensive money right on. And maybe that was a compelling factor, it's like. And it's all gonna, you know, at the end of the day, it all comes down to the same pocket.
At the end of the day, yeah.
So, I mean, I think that as recommended. Makes sense. I don't think it might, I think it is emotional to say. Words, and that it might actually help the, the argument for the school, oh, is. We looked for, we looked under every rock, we gave this huge bill less. Right, it's, it's, that end gets value. So I, I think it's our burden is probably recovered.
Sorry. Feel like I need to apologize for putting you in this situation.
No, no, Susan, please stop.
It's, well, if, if I may, yeah, but I, I do think here is a question of perception among taxpayers. And I feel as though we, we worked on the school thing, you know, trying to find the money wherever. It's a very expensive project. On the other hand, I feel as though the taxpayers think that we have allocated money that we have not spent. To try to reduce the cost of that project. Because I understand the issue of more expensive money, less expensive money, I understand. But I think as though taxpayers prefer for us as a board to say, we have the ability. We didn't have the ability to take the one point eight million or whatever that the school committee decided to do. But we do have the authority to do what we think is right with this money. And I feel as though everyone's kind of, it's been asked at a couple of the school, the school meetings. People say, so what about the water treatment plant? When is that going to hit my taxpayer? What's that going to cost? We know what it is, but we don't know what I as taxpayer are going to pay for it. So I feel as though we're able to go and once we have, whenever, whenever the override is going to have to be. Because we're facing an override for the water treatment plant, right?
Well, that's.
You were too.
Alright, well, so, so I think that we can say it's going to cost less. That's where I.
David?
Just, just two cents here.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. If the school project, first, I feel like maybe it touched out on one type family, some of the other families. So the more you can reduce that cost of that might be beneficial because. Some family, either that had these Christian schools, not their school history, but they're.
So you're advocating to put it towards the school?
I, I guess. It's just a little piece of.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Chris?
I would, I would argue just the opposite of what Karen. I think the optics of saying. That we're going to take this money and put it towards the water treatment plant. Will satisfy the people that don't want to deal with the school. They don't care about the school and they don't know against it. I want this money put towards water treatment. I think it, I think it satisfies that in their head that the town is doing something for the water treatment, but I don't care what happens at the school. Oh, we also have money that we can put towards the school, the school money we can put it towards the school. I think that just. Mentally, for some people will, you know, set differently.
Yeah, I'm kind of aligned with that thought process. I think, I, you know, I didn't realize that they voted one point eight million to go over to the schools, which is, is great. Because that's, you know, good help with that project and um.
I am of the opinion as well that if we, if we can minimal. Risk reduction, which we just kind of like threw all that twelve thousand dollars, I would prefer go to the water treatment as well.
I mean, that's not going to put an undue burden on you with your paperwork and the Clean Water Act and not going to make your job any more difficult.
It's still a capital.
But.
It may happen just anyways because we did ask for direct congressional spending on the water treatment.
Yeah.
So.
Right. So hopefully that'll have a tune.
So I think we're going to get something out of it.
I hope so.
I think we're going to get what we asked, uh, but I think we're going to get something out of it.
Okay. Alright, so um, I agree with you. On the, that I, I think it satisfies the way you do on the water treatment plant with, with the schools. Um, and I also think, and I will say it again, it's not, the penalty is an interest for earning. It's not that we're losing money, so I think that needs to be said too.
Yeah, but we are, we, we are losing money.
I'm just saying it again, it's, it's the interest, it's the interest earned.
But we are losing most. But we're, that's coming, we're still paying money out. That was money that could have been used for something else.
But it's also not a given.
You, you said.
Our.
Forty years. That was one of the last one, right, last penalty one.
If you, if you made ten thousand dollars in interest, you don't have to pay the penalty, you can use that ten thousand dollars. Pay the penalty, then ten thousand is gone. So you're not, you're still losing money, but it's not.
We are.
Money that we borrowed.
It's not money we borrowed, it's money we kept a little bit too long, some borrowed. Okay. So I think, I think we know where folks are falling. Uh, if somebody wants to take a stat of the motion, we just need to amend the last sentence of each point. And let's just do it individually, just in case folks have different thoughts. Is there any further discussion before we move closer motion?
Just a question. Um, before you vote the one for the library.
Uh huh.
Do you want to withhold aside funds for the replacement of those boards? To Andrew's point, that is replacing the boards on the exterior building, which wouldn't have a useful life.
I would say yes.
Okay, and which means you would want to reduce that first motion um by the amount that you think is appropriate.
Well, how much is, how much of the worst?
His quote was twenty, his quote was twenty five.
Okay.
Um, he had a, a capital project of thirty one, which we told him to hold to this issue that was solved.
Did we say fifty?
I put forty. I didn't want to, I didn't want to overhaul because I don't want to.
Right. You think forty will cover you with any escalation?
I think forty should be enough.
It does, it did quickly.
We can, he wants to do it right away.
Oh, okay.
Anything else we can take from his budget, yeah.
Okay, so that amount will be sixty thousand four hundred sixty two dollars and sixty one cents, correct? And that's first motion?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, does anybody?
I'm sorry, what's the number Nancy?
Six zero one hundred.
Six zero one.
Yeah, six hundred, sixty? Four sixty two point six.
Point six, right.
Move.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Move to allocate sixty thousand four hundred sixty two dollars and sixty one cents or lesser, so unspent funds. From the library that exclusion project. To the uh new water treatment plant. Part of the motion at the.
Fall special.
Fall special town meeting. To reduce the impact to taxpayers of project.
Motion by Andrew Goodrich, second, second by who? You, Karen Conley, so. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Uh, opposed? Aye. Pass this four to one. Sorry Karen. Okay, uh, next.
Move to allocate three hundred and thirty nine thousand three hundred forty six dollars and ninety six cents or less or some. Unspent funds from uh the senior center, which is more of a gym that exclusion project to the proposed new. Um, water treatment plant as part of the motion in the fall special town meeting. To reduce the impact on taxpayers.
Uh, motion by Mr. Goodrich, second, second by Karen Conley. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Karen Cantfield, yes?
Move to allocate twenty two thousand one hundred fifty eight dollars and ninety seven cents or less or some unspent funds. From the public safety from what's that exclusion project to the proposed water treatment plant. Uh, as part of the motion at the fall special town meeting to reduce the impact on tax, on the taxpayers.
Motion by Andrew Goodrich, second, second by Karen Conley. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Both. Pass this four to one.
And I'm sure, do you want to take a motion since you are in control of the library comments, firms, Kelly, to move forward with twenty thousand?
No.
You just want to town debate in your court.
Do the motions required? Let's do it, we'll be set.
Okay.
I moved to allocate forty thousand four hundred and sixty one dollars.
No, just forty thousand, right?
Oh, forty, that's right. I moved to allocate forty thousand dollars from the library. Uh, the library did exclusion project uh for.
Replace the exterior board.
Purpose is to replace the exterior board of the circuit town. Second by Karen Cantfield. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Five zero.
You had applaudies.
What? No, why would you applaudies?
Feel like I put you all through the ringer.
No, you didn't. Alright, Karen DeJong.
That's her.
Alright, don't go anywhere. Did you get the? Budget calendar. Oh, you can go somewhere, sorry. Wait a minute.
Save the budget calendar, smack that.
Thanks, Steven. Alright, I'll let you folks dig into the twenty six budget calendar. Chris?
So I have some free time, so I set up the fiscal twenty six budget calendar, subject to what changed.
My only question would be, uh, did you think that this year's accelerated calendar helped or for everybody?
I think it helps because the, literally the budget process starts in August.
Okay.
So this has to get posted at some point, so if we don't do it now, I'm going to be back very few months asking you to.
I can say no, last year, the first year, we moved everything up, accelerated it, you know.
Because of the charter.
I. So, okay, I just, that was my only question for you, and then. Will it impact me? I want others to ask questions.
Commenting comments, well, you have asked questions.
Any comments or concerns for Nancy? And. Glad you brought it forward.
Really? We have to talk about this?
I know, lots of.
I refuse to.
Yeah. I can't say, actually, we haven't even started, you know, finished this year.
I mean, you should probably pending select more meeting dates.
Okay.
It, it's on the motion.
Okay. Okay, motion? Moving for the fiscal twenty six budget calendar, which is subject to change once this left board set the meeting dates. To the calendar year twenty twenty five. Second by Karen Cantfield, second by Karen Conley. All those in favor? Aye. That's four zero, right, because Susan stepped down.
I choose you to vote on something to change. Step down to the.
Thank you. No, thank you. Oh, so. Next up is to review and discuss. Updates revisions to our select board policies that Karen and Lauren have been working very diligently through. So I'm going to turn the table over to Karen.
Yeah, I'll start. I'll wait for Susan to come in. We're talking about policies, Susan, then. We, uh, before we launch, just two things. One, um, just want to, as we all know, that we publicly commend. Lorraine for her incredible diligence on keeping an eye on this product because, um, as you saw in the background. You know, this stuff has been, basically it started in nineteen seventy two and people have been doing policies and it's piled all this time and. You know, a lot of them are not necessary. And what, um, we, we'd like to do tonight is sort of set the table for what will be the marks for meeting conversation. Um, there are, look, I should have brought.
Well, can I select board meeting conversation?
Oh, yes, so, okay. Because it's too much, and we're not going to do it all one night.
Thank you.
And we're not going to, we have to look at the media stuff. So what we propose to do, the book, just so you know visually, visually, the books are listed. Of pieces of paper. Um, that have been, um, uh, put in place by, uh, uh, pre- previous. What we'd like to do is divide it into tranches that are managed. Tonight before you, I'll get to this in a minute, are those that we went through and we said. These we don't need anymore and why we, why we came to that conclusion. We think they're pretty easy to lift because they're pretty explanatory as why, you know, you don't need. I'll say about them because it exists anymore.
So you're commenting delete this because it's addressed in.
Exactly, yeah, so you have to go through those and I think it's in the, in the, in the spreadsheet that Lorraine just presented. Um, and then with the chair's permission, what we'll do is set up, um, because then we're going to start populating. On the meeting schedule, the ones, the next tranche will be the ones we want to keep, but maybe need to be tweaked.
Okay.
So we'll review the, the, the third tranche will be. Yeah, we need, we need to really rewrite this whole thing for, you know, the heavier list. And then the fourth tranche, which will be down for, will be also, we don't have that we should probably have. Because I think that'll require the most attention by the board and we also have to write that. So. Lorraine, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you can do it yourself.
Okay, so this, this spreadsheet that you have in your hand is a list of all of the policies that are currently in the book. They do not put, they're, the only missing from here are the ones that will be disclosed as brand new ones. Well, they're so separate, like this, it's just too hard to read. Um, and the first nine.
You said.
Five.
I'm picking nerves.
I want to turn it off. Okay, I. So that's the, that's the, that's the table set. Any questions about how we want proceeding?
No.
It sounds like you're organized.
Oh, they do have one question.
Yep.
On the suggested motion, it looks like you're recommending deleting seven.
Correct, okay, the first two are just, we wanted to give you a background of why the policy manual is created and you're doing. We're not going to address that tonight.
Yep.
We just wanted you to take a chance, take an opportunity to look at it.
Okay.
And then the first, uh, one dash ninety will, is a rewrite as well, if we choose to rewrite. So those two things, we're just, just FYI.
So it's nine minus two gets us to seven.
Seven, to be.
And the two of them need to be rewritten, which is why they're not the ones that are being deleted.
Correct, correct.
I'm just trying to catalyze on the motion.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And can I ask a question? Isn't there a. Isn't there a state policy handbook for select board members?
There is.
And so is that
Well, it's a Maya, it's a Maya handbook.
I'm sorry?
It's a Maya.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, but
Do we need both?
There could, these are completely different things, local decision.
I understand that, my question is, do we need both, do we need a local?
I think all we need to do is reconcile it to that, so it's
Yeah.
But there are things that are not
Do we need to us? Okay.
Which is why this book can bloom so much, is somebody go, oh, we can help you out, uh, you're a policy.
Like the Hopper Pedder policy, they don't really have a policy.
But there are specific to our
But a specific part, yeah. The rest of that are another policies we're recommending to be deleted, you know.
You'll, you'll see that almost all of the ones we're saying delete are handled elsewhere for that exactly. Uh, but yeah, we'll add that to our list of, of checklists to look at all the Maya lists. Um, so with your permission, I've just run through the ones we're talking about. Lorraine has very thoughtfully given us the backup. Uh, the first one is, I don't, oh, um, I also want to level set on, uh, Lorraine has very thoughtfully, uh, recommended, and I agree with her, that we come up with a different, um, numbering system. Do you want to talk about that quickly? Like, when we're, when we create a new policy, you see, this new policy number is blank. Uh, and Lorraine has some suggestions about how when we do implement new policies. Um, that
They'd be topic based, pretty much.
Yeah, that we, we do it like, oh, that we range it better, because right now it's just topic.
Yeah. For example, for a few examples, we have partnership, we'll have to approve people. For example, someone who personally, some likely licenses, meeting requirements, boards and committees. Um, DPW, uh, for example, town council. So they're, they're be, they're be sorted by topic. Yeah, rather than this arbitrary.
Looks like they're done by years.
Yes, by years. They were written by years in the day, doesn't mean you can't have something with that.
But the end of the day, that would belong to all of us. Well, that's if the document is organized by topic, and then you can add to the topic, um, you know, we, DPW policy one. And you can just add two. Uh, and the final sort of overarching thing is that at the end of all of this, all of these documents will be online for those to see, because right now it's open back. So we don't actually, you don't even know, yeah. So, should I run through three point nine eight is the first one?
Sure.
Um, you'll see that it is a policy, uh, transferring item to go before the, uh, advisory board. In the policy handbook, and, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped to the wrong one.
No, you do know that's
Oh, yeah, that's the first one to delete. Oh, you know, that three nine eight on the spreadsheet says reserve fund, that's what I'm confused.
Okay, so
Yeah, it just says to reserve fund transfer, and then three nine eight says transfer items to go before the advisory board.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, it is right. Um, yeah, so we don't need that, because it exists in the master of the law right now. And that's our recommendation, if it's different somewhere else, we don't need a separate policy, to your point, or about, uh, within our policy.
Right.
So that's the first one, the second one is seven, nine, eight. Do you guys have a nine eight?
Yeah.
Which is, uh, about flagging the flagging of staff that is delegated in federal law.
Hold on.
Yes, sir.
Well, the town flag, just a merk flag.
True. Is that the flag I'm talking about?
Just a flag, we're assuming a merk.
Yes.
All right, so that's the question, do we need a policy that
Doesn't say, it just says the flag should be hung. So maybe this just needs to be
Say.
Do, do, well, the first question is, does the board, are we both, we're left, okay. Does the board wish to have a policy that instructs whoever we want to instruct, instructs the town, let's say the town, to lower a, our flag in accordance with, in concert with a federal like law? Or, and, or, do we need a policy that we might just decide to lower our flag?
Well, first of all, you do have to, if the, if the US flag is lowered, all other flags, especially
So, right, so that's federal law, yeah. So then, do
But you could certainly, I suppose, lower the town flag, not, and not lower the US flag, and not lower the Commonwealth flag. I don't know, we flag as federal, I think, but
I, I can tell you right now that this is a challenge.
I'm sure it's a challenge.
Operation Jim, if you wanted to shirt right there.
No, we, we get, we get noticed late, we have to get guys out to do it, they send in the lowest body after we put the flag down on Saturday. Guys in the forest, man, overtime. Um, that's for the national flag, because that's really the only one we fly. We don't have multiple flag poles with multiple flags.
Right, I, I'm all for simplicity.
And really, you just, at some point, you're going to make something bad because
Well, we don't
They weren't put up, like, not for
Right, so we can either
Keep it a simple
Or I, I would suggest we pull it for further discussion before that time. Uh, I move to use
Right.
He could have
Any final, any objection?
I, I don't know, I was just making
No, no, I'm not, I, and whatever, it's not why I
Is he a policy?
We can always bring it back.
Now I create a new one.
You can, that's true, that's okay. Um, the next is thirteen ninety
I just think it's so funny, because it's such a reflection of, like, the power that people just really, really need policies. Okay.
Well, it kind of makes sense at the moment, right? And that's why we have to know this at them.
Makes me
Thirteen ninety-eight is, um, uh, empowers administrator to, um, maintain a skeleton force, which, um, he uh, already has this authority, it's redundant to disauthorize. The examiner, not
And that authority is stated in his job description, or where is that? Like, anything?
You have multiple lists here. Uh, uh, obsoletory allowing to be in order skeleton force, personnel exposures are defined in personnel policies. That's right, the authority, personnel policies. Outline
Trump towards policies.
Excuse me?
Well, very
Trump meaning
I know, that's a very hard question, sorry.
It's just, it's redundant, it's redundant to what have personnel policies.
Okay.
And how, who changes, sorry, I
That's all right.
So who changes the, someone may change those, who gets to change personnel? Who goes, who changes?
The T A and A O.
So we are
Well, you
All those in there.
Personnel come to you.
They all come to you, contracts come to you.
And they also know
So, good.
Yeah, I mean, there are
That's not something you need to worry about.
Okay, so while you're here. Uh, twelve ninety-eight.
Twenty-one
I'm sorry, twenty-one fifty-eight. Um, use of town vehicles, uh, it shouldn't be used in personnel, personal use, uh, it's not needed because it's in the personnel policies and contracts. Right? Uh, twenty-six ninety-eight, uh, and review of the town administrator, we don't need things that are incorporated in the charter. Uh, and the, oh, two more. Uh, thirty-six ninety-eight is the, um, board authority regarding personnel, policy seeks to clarify the board's authority as written in the policy is redundant to the charter and unnecessary. Please, what, do I know? How much could it work? Um, and then the last
So even the, the breadth of some of the lower paragraphs are in the charter.
Sorry.
So meaning, you know, it gives the board, the type of town, good doc, certain personnel, different policies, personnel directive. So is the charter just as broad as this?
True. I, I actually haven't pulled up the one, yeah. You want to pull that one and verify? That's fine, I just, just to see what to do, no, it seems like it's a burden for somebody to look at all of it. It does seem like it was very intentional. Something, something was in there, something.
You have another thirty-eight ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's, it's shitty.
Yeah, sure, it's
Yeah.
Thirty-six. Left, I don't, I want to hold this one and double check for the new charter.
Okay.
Because it's just, I just have a breath a while.
It just seems like there's a little
Yeah, I, I have to, there has been a lag between when we did the assessment of this and when it's been presented to the board, so I'm sure
I'm going to draw about thirty-six ninety-eight.
Thirty-six ninety-eight.
I mean, I don't know, do we have a personnel handbook? I don't think we do, it's true.
Um, there's a personnel policy.
Well, I was working on it, it's going to have to be done shortly, we read the entire thing.
You have read it?
Well, I've had to re-write it. It'll be coming into you at some point, but it's rewritten.
Did we ratify that, or does
Not, it's in the
We adopted.
Okay.
Then it probably is, okay, but I'll pull it this
Yeah, let's just go, one, one of the things that I did feel like to do is pull all personality related policy, review them with Paul. To make sure that it's covered someplace.
Okay.
In the contracts or in personnel policies, these are people on
Maya and, um, HR. Uh, and then the last one is ninety, uh, I'm sorry, thirty-eight ninety-eight, which is underground storage tanks regarding, uh, a public hearing for installation, and underground storage tanks are no longer allowed in the situation.
Well, that's not really a true statement, because we put in the mobile gas station, they have underground storage tanks. That's a lean, so I don't know who, but we have processed documented in the select board office for underground storage tanks with the fire card.
With the what?
Because the state, the state laws around, yeah. You have the fire, the law, what's required, they buy them, they have to
So we're, we're pulling this one?
Yeah, this, this should be deleted, I got a fair problem.
Yeah, there's state laws, that needs to be, we have to leave that, so
There's redundant state law.
Oh, okay, so we're getting that.
Yeah, sorry, um, yeah.
We're deleting a policy.
Delete, the notes, the notes were not in the law.
Got it.
Okay. All right, so the other one that we're not considering, the original two, seven, is, uh, number eight, which is
Thirty-six
Sorry, it's eight, nine, the person, ninety-eight.
Number eight. All right, any questions for Karen and Lorraine?
No, thank you for doing this.
I'm so proud of your policy, Lauren.
Our house staff.
Um, so we
So do you need a motion?
Yes. Motion would be
To delete select board policies, three dash ninety-eight, seven dash ninety-eight, thirteen dash ninety-eight, twenty-one dash ninety-eight, twenty-six dash ninety-eight. And thirty-eight dash ninety-eight, which are absolute documented, it's not true, it's not policies and or, that's to the law.
Motion by Andrew Goodrich, second, second by Karen Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
And thank you, that's looking for, in my opinion.
Um, and our attention is to the next tranche, we will be able, several of these to re-renew for the meeting.
Yeah, our apologies, we're just so busy.
Well, hey, you made some good steps forward, so
More and more, it's just, you know, little step forward.
Okay, perfect. All right. All right, so you did that. Um, just a quick discussion and vote for Hopper Pedder license renewals, uh, that we have on page eighty-four. So we have the Burns Ice Cream as well as for the Disassembly Food Truck, um.
That's it for this week.
But did we already amend Emily's last time they were here?
Well, what we did is we gave them permission to allow the food truck year round.
Right.
But we did not issue a new license.
Oh, still need, still need to do that.
We still need to do our annual Hopper Pedder license renewal.
Okay, good, okay.
Yep.
We have motions?
We do.
Anyone?
We need the select board vote to renew the Hopper Pedder license for the ice cream, we need to get a fair, four seat. Pedler pending word of help approval, we're the move that the select board will vote to renew the annual Hopper license for the Disassembly Food Truck, they're going to be rolled to a four, you mark to a five, adding four.
Uh, motion by, motions by Mr. Goodrich, second, second by Karen Canfield, uh, just discussion, any need to pull these out separately? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then All right. Aye.
Aye.
Citroen Beach Association, annual renewal.
Talking slowly.
Uh, yeah, sorry about that. We tried to be long pretty quickly, but we actually did. Are you refusing yourself? Okay. For anybody else that needs to refuse themselves? Enjoy, enjoy the hallway. All right, so gentlemen, you are here in your annual renewal of the Citroen Beach Association. Um, where you receive a liquor license, payment hours. Any changes in the operation? Same as last year?
I know we did just receive one report, there was one police report, um, one, right, when some scandal was into a car this last, last summer.
Yeah.
Um, and we received that, but other than that, um, I'm seeing a cutters here this evening either.
We did receive a letter from the Sherpas.
Yeah.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, not see it.
Well, I spoke with them today. Uh, his biggest concern was, we adjusted the hours
Yeah.
For the Citroen Beach Association last year, and we've kept those same adjusted hours for this year's renewal. They didn't want us to forget about those alterations, so. I think he felt a lot better when he left, um, about that.
So those hours that have, that we changed last year, Lorraine, half of documented.
They're in this new lease, this, this new license update, in a document.
Yes. I know they refer to, um, trash issues and the wetlands, et cetera, et cetera, but, um, there are some things that are clearly within, you know, near the purview and the depth that, what the, the, the wetlands down there are, continue to be a source of concerns for, I think, a lot of the neighbors and a lot of people, but I'm not sure that falls on your head. We do have a new occupation agency coming in, so maybe some attention can be paid to that. But I don't think that refers to the license, with the entertainment license.
And when we had Amy down there last year, she proved everything, you know, where the apartment wasn't all of that, so no concerns.
And it, it doesn't look the same now, I mean, whatever she delineated, does something need to go back down there again and just put some markers now?
There's signage right now, uh, we have some ropes out there for a while, but we'll, whatever. It's basically the same.
Yeah.
Can you get the ropes back up for the season?
Yeah.
I mean, I just think there's a lot of concern about the marsh on there, so it's, it's interesting to continue to try to protect that.
The signage, they're in, you know, steel, so No, we, we agree with them.
Magnet fishermen. These guys were magnets, what are they going to find down there? All right, so we're still looking for the hours, Monday through Thursday from eleven to ten, Friday, Sunday, eleven to twelve, A M. Entertainment, Sunday through Thursday, eleven to ten P M, Friday, Saturday until eleven thirty. Okay. So alcohol is stopping thirty minutes prior to when the entertainment shuts down.
And I think this is about, I don't get it, I'll
And I guess the other report issue that came up last year, the Citroen Beach Association has not requested changes, they added that out of the patio. And there should be no liquor on the other panel. They don't have a liquor license, we have the patio, and the neighbors, they're the de-nominals in patio that are like
Yeah.
It sounds like you probably kept up with that regulation since it was only getting one roof. I would imagine if you run the patio more often, you come up with
Well, fortunately, while patio Well, porch, really called patio, it's a porch.
Yeah. Yeah, porch, yeah.
No, we have no interest in expanding the licenses.
To clarify then, the premises are defined as on the interior.
Um, alright, any other questions? We're basically keeping with the same as last year.
Yeah, no change.
No changes, so thank you for continuing to be good neighbors, you know, we do know, we, you know, keep it consistent. Uh, folks, but does it seem to have grown? Um, which is good. Um, so thank you for continuing to be sensitive even just to their needs, even though they, you know, they certainly enter regard to express concern. Okay, um, anything additional, anyone? Uh, just, we have the, you make a motion?
Move that the select board vote to renew the twenty twenty four seasonal on premise. Section twelve.
Yeah.
Section twelve. Section twelve club of all alcoholic license for the Citrus Beach Association from April first, twenty twenty four through January fifteenth, twenty twenty five. The group hours of Monday through Thursday, eleven A M to ten A M.
idea, sorry.
Ten P M, sorry, um, thank you for the correction, um, Fridays to Sunday, eleven A M to twelve A M. Further move that the select board vote to renew the twenty twenty four seasonal entertaining license for the Citrus Beach Association for inside entertainment only, Sunday through Thursday, eleven A M to ten P M, Friday to Saturday, eleven A M to eleven thirty P M for acoustic amplified musicians and or DJ and equipment.
Motion by Karen Connelly, second.
Second by Karen Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the record, Mr. Goodrich keeps himself. Uh, I think you're great, good, thank you for making, sorry, it's so late.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, I appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate it.
The purpose is to help the name company like here, I tell you now.
That's right.
The purpose is to help when they come for their license and things.
Alright. So, again, much to probably chills. This May, we're talking about going, do you have a special town meeting in the fall?
Yes.
Um.
And those two have included articles now include the one you voted.
Exactly.
Also.
Exactly. Um, so you're looking to propose fall special town meeting for November eighteen, twenty twenty four, I should look to some, that doesn't, uh, come equipped with any holidays, any, I don't think so, eighteen.
It doesn't, and that's the one that the town clerk is supportive because it's after the election.
Yeah.
And just because of the timelines that is required for setting these, so you decided on a September, won't be at the start of June. So to start getting people notice, but, um, we just wanna make sure that Kathy can keep paying for sanity, I'm right there with her.
Yeah.
So having that be, it could, would be, we started off.
It'll be a busy fall, does anybody have any, um. I definitely would, well, again, but I wouldn't recommend anything into September, it's too early.
Well, yeah.
Still great. Okay, uh, motion then? Uh, any questions, Andrew, sorry? We're doing a special town meeting, date, November eighteen, no, no, the eighteen.
I need the, thanks.
So it's Monday the eighteen.
Thanksgiving is eleven twenty eight.
Thanksgiving's twenty eight.
Twenty eight, perfect, thanks.
You look at the board's vote, you vote again.
No, don't look at the board as a man. Static.
Oh, wow.
This is right, I'm sorry.
Oh, Nancy, Nancy.
Nancy.
Walked me down that garden.
Sorry, I didn't catch that, what's your call?
That is a lot. Go to schedule the fall special town meeting for November eighteen, twenty twenty four, or to a date in November acceptable.
Second. Motion by Karen Connelly, second by Karen Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
And then what you get for respecting those executive actions, huh? I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Dr. John Dialato.
You already did that.
We did that already, I thought we did it earlier, why didn't?
We did it earlier.
Well, because, because we don't usually.
We usually do it in the, right, you're good.
Alright, we're gonna. Okay. Frame layers licensing.
Yes.
Move to approve the renewal of brainout life layers license for hostile contract.
Motion by Karen Canfield, second by Karen Connelly, we have all paperwork, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, one day wine and waltz. We have one for, uh, go ahead, Karen.
Yeah, I think it's just one, right?
Yeah.
That move to approve a one day wine and waltz license to St. Mary's in activity with a luncheon fish fry at the parish center to, at New Foster Road on March twenty second, twenty twenty four, from five P M to seven P M.
Motion by Karen Connelly.
Um, question?
Yeah. It doesn't, I, are you thinking the other fish fry for the harbor?
No, I'm thinking, how can we give a liquor license to St. Mary's when they're not? Would you that to like, isn't usually cater?
We always give a liquor license to St. Mary's and the lights of Columbus serve their liquor, their tips are high and heavy.
Okay, alright, I thought it usually said. Okay, sorry for that.
No, what?
And they, they have their own insurance, St. Mary's, they need to pop over there in the.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, motion by Karen Connelly, is there a second? Second by Andrew Goodrich, sorry. Goodrich, um, you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, we will move on to liaison reports. Alright. Karen Connelly has one?
I do, um, I think we already sent us all the notice of the remote, we put consulting, um. I don't know what you wanna call, the, the, the review, the environmental review, and there was one a, a couple of months ago, but we didn't submit the, our people did not submit.
You're talking about the harbor law?
The harbor, um, Pier forty four, the, um, one of the agencies wanted a different type of information in a different format, as I understand it. So instead of deciding to postpone it, they decided to withdraw the application and resubmit it, and so now the hearings, a public hearing is now going to happen. So that's what that, um, that relates to, and the project is still on schedule, but, you know, it's just environmental review, et cetera. So if anyone wants to join it, welcome.
Thank you.
Karen, Susan, update on, on what I might get to share?
Yeah, well, we can.
Um, I made it last. But you should have received today's decision, so, yeah, the draft survey, that's why we're, it's your closer point. Um, which is with the big piece last meeting we talked about, that they've been moving more town anymore, you aren't here. Um, so that that could be done correctly, so if you have any comments, did they go back to you, Susan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think you got those, I mean, I got.
I did send it to the cabinet. Yeah. So she already. And we have been encouraging them, it's a lot, I mean, a lot of butters are on the committee and then a lot, a butter show up. So we've been encouraging them to ensure that they're reaching all associated. As far as Congress, I want to get the survey as well.
Okay.
And is it survey monkey? Yes, it's survey monkey, we have the account, um, we're in.
Nancy said that.
Or Nancy, yeah, thanks.
We want to.
Oh, and join, I was enjoying that.
Join that.
Teamwork, because it's the dream.
I had to get the wizard to pay for it.
Yeah.
That's what I follow.
Well, thank you for doing that, I'll leave it. Anything else for you?
You, wait.
The money, yeah, okay, you? No, I mean, waterway, waterways are. Andrew?
Get your rain barrels. On sale, get your rain barrels. Save forty dollars.
I'm not feeling comfortable for the summer since it's raining for the last five months, I feel. Wish we had somewhere to put all the rain.
I know.
That's why I have.
Need them now.
I need a bus.
Water resources, more water capture.
Yeah, we do.
For the offseason. November.
And there was a very successful disability event this Saturday, um, unfortunately I was unable to go, but I thought it was well-attended and very good, and, uh, we thank our position on disabilities for hosting that. Uh, it's a lot of work, and I think they've pulled into the regions this year, so thank you to that, that team, it's a nice event. Resources. Uh, I don't have anything additional. Okay?
Alright.
Um, we do have some correspondence.
We do, with a bunch of correspondence.
Um, okay, I will start, um. We received a letter from the governor, lieutenant governor, on the chapter ninety program support for our local infrastructure. Um, and that is, um, setting up the, acknowledging what Citrus Chapter Ninety allowance is for twenty twenty five, and it's five hundred and fifty seven thousand, one hundred and ninety two dollars for, for that fiscal year. And then we have a note from, a letter from Xfinity regarding the twenty twenty three license fee payment at fifty cents per subscriber, so that was, um, uh, five thousand, seven hundred and forty one subscribers, um, and they also mentioned some channel changes, which I don't think I need to mention. Um, and then another, a public hearing, um, public comments from Department of Public Utilities, um, for EverSource, um, for, um, modifying their, um, three-year energy efficiency plan, so they're increasing energy efficiency budget for residents, but decreasing the commercial industrial, um, energy efficiency program that they have, because there's been underspent on commercial, but they uh, see more need on the, um, residential side, and the totals are, um, increasing by one million, eight hundred and forty two thousand for the residential and decreasing by twenty four million, three hundred and fifty five. Um, on the commercial side, we got more for climate, um, mosquito and tick prevention. There is a presentation at the Citrus Town Library on April twenty ninth, um, so we can add it to our calendar from three thirty to five P M, um, overviewing, an overview of mosquito services in Homewood County, as well as some information on ticks and tick, tick prevention. Um, we also received a letter from, uh, National Grid, um, and it's a thirty day notification for their vegetation management, um, and, and there is a map of where they're going to, um, these trimming, um, along, along the, um, right away, so.
I don't know if they posted that.
They, yeah, well, they've been busy in my neighborhood, so.
That does take it down quite a bit of tree, quite a few.
Correct.
Yeah.
I also said that to D P W, so they don't know where.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um.
I just wanna say that mosquito and tick prevention seminar I went a couple of years ago was amazing.
Oh, yeah.
Very, very good, especially with all the illness and viruses and things that they're taking.
Yeah.
I highly recommend it.
Oh, good, it did look like they had quite a few speakers. Um. We did receive, I mean, that's all the, in our backup, we did receive, um, we keep receiving correspondence on trash bins for this one. I haven't seen a recent one.
Oh, I saw one rather recently. My trash.
A couple of weeks ago, maybe?
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago.
It was, it was maybe it was an email.
Yeah, an email.
Yeah. Well, it continues to be a problem.
It continues to be an issue, I don't know if like we respond to that or how we should, have a, have a response. Well, we probably shouldn't have a discussion as to whether we're going to state them. Yes.
As I say, when we put them back out, not to this in future, but.
Right, and then level expectations, yeah, right, like if they're not going to reach that, and, and such, but.
I do wanna make sure, though, that Front Street is covered, I mean, I, in my personal opinion, we pulled out too many last summer. Um, you know, that is our, our fair, the summer, and also make sure that we keep it clean. Um, so we can take a look at that and make.
Okay.
Yeah, um, there was some additional correspondence with, uh, that came in with regards to our moderate, so I will respond to that, um, sort of came in at the time that we reviewed our abandonment policy, so, um. I'll already get that, that out, that was. Um. Anything else, or we will just have meeting minutes to improve?
I know.
If anybody's watching, we have a St. Patrick's Day parade this Sunday that kicks off at one o'clock, we should, to then start the meeting, so, um, we can, uh, don't forget. Uh, St. Patrick's Day fall is actually on the paper, so, on the Saturday, and there's cleanup day the next day.
There's cleanup right out there.
With that.
Citrus Crash, sorry, Citrus Crash this month, yes.
Uh, after the, yeah.
Right out there.
Nice.
At the, I think it's the Home Methodist Church, is that where?
There's a flyer, I don't, we didn't receive it, but, um, she, she did post it, so if you're interested in walking the room after for the bag, that would.
That's great, thank you. Alright, um, if there's nothing, anything else, um. I'll make a motion to accept a minute for the select board meeting held on February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, second. Uh, second by Karen Canfield, all in favor? I, I refuse myself. Um, and I think that was it, right?
Yeah.
Um, with that, I will accept an order to adjourn. And sign that.
And sign that.
Stop it. Uh, second by Karen Connelly, all in favor?
Aye.